Good morning, everybody. I apologize for the delay in getting started, but good morning and want to welcome everyone here for today's hearing. Before we jump into it, I want to acknowledge my colleagues who are present, including the co-chairs of today's hearing. We have Senator Salazar, who is the Chair of the Senate Standing Committee on Crime Victims, Crime and Corrections. We also have Senator Zellner-Meyry, who is co-chairing this hearing. I'm James Scoofus, co-chair and Chair of the Senate Investigations Government Operations Committee. And I see we are joined by a number of colleagues, Senators Palumbo, Borello, and Rollison, I want to thank. Oh, sorry, Senators Martin is also here. I thought you were Borello.
Don't talk just yet.
Yeah, I was going to say, my deepest apologies for that mistake. So, we're here to discuss CoreCraft, which, for, I think, you know, folks who aren't in the bubble, so to speak, is a bit of an unknown entity within the, within DOCS. And it's my understanding that this year is actually the 200th anniversary of CoreCraft, or at least CoreCraft's predecessor. And we are looking at today, CoreCraft's role as a preferred source supplier for office equipment and other supplies here in New York State, and we'll get a lot more into that in a bit, as well as how its operations and performance ultimately benefits or otherwise impacts New York taxpayers, incarcerated individuals, and the state at large. We come at this from a whole bunch of different perspectives, and we look forward to a healthy discourse today. We will be swearing in all of the witnesses, all the testimony today, and so please be prepared for that. But I first want to turn it over to my two co-chairs to see if they have any remarks before we start.
No, we'll go ahead and get started.
Okay, we're going to jump into it then. Our first panel, who I appreciate is here, are panelists from state agencies. And I want to, in particular, welcome our Acting Commissioner, Daniel Marticello, correct? Yep. As well as Deputy Commissioner for Correctional Industries Compliance Standards and Diversity, Osborne McKay. We're also joined by OGS Office of General Services Commissioner Jeanette Moy. Thank you for being here, all of you. And I defer to you on who will get started and be the first to provide remarks, but if you could all please first raise your right hand for me. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Which Commissioner would like to get started?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Good morning, Chair Salazar, Scoofus, Meyry, and other distinguished members of the legislature. I am Daniel F. Marticello III, the Acting Commissioner for the Department of Corrections and Community Supervision, and I am joined by Deputy Commissioner Osborne McKay. It is my honor to discuss some of the ways that the Correctional Industries Program, more commonly known as CoreCraft, contributes to the department's overall mission and the corresponding value provided to both the incarcerated population and all New York State residents. The department is charged with the care of approximately 32,750 incarcerated individuals. Central to the department's mission is to provide a continuity of appropriate treatment services to address the population's needs so that they are prepared for release. The provision of programs is a vital component in the rehabilitation process. CoreCraft is one of the many tools the department utilizes to fulfill this goal. Correctional Industries was originally started at Auburn Correctional Facility in 1824 to produce items that the facility required to function. Since that time, it has evolved into a comprehensive job training program where participants develop the requisite hard and soft skills suited to today's job market. Currently, CoreCraft operates 38 programs in 27 correctional facilities, offering programming to approximately 1,250 incarcerated individuals, and employs approximately 230 staff. Correctional Industries is comprised of four program areas: manufacturing, abatement, resource recovery, consisting of recycling and composting, and call centers through a partnership with the New York State Department of Motor Vehicles to assist members of the general public. Manufacturing represents the largest aspect of the organization and operates in both maximum and medium security institutions. In addition, we operate our own distribution network to deliver products throughout the state. CoreCraft is designated in state law as a preferred source provider in addition to the New York State Industries for the Disabled and the New York State Preferred Source Program for New Yorkers who are blind. The Preferred Source Program was established to advance special social and economic goals. Our customers are not only reducing administrative costs, but they are making an investment in public safety by supporting program participants in their personal and professional development. Incarcerated individuals who meet minimum eligibility standards can voluntarily apply to the program, which provides real-life experience by offering a standard work schedule and training to produce high-quality items, work as part of a team, and enhance job skills. Correctional Industries employs formerly incarcerated individuals who participate in the program. These individuals demonstrate the benefit of the program to current participants and regularly speak to the population about how it changed their lives in a positive way. Additionally, CoreCraft has proven to have a beneficial impact on recidivism. Among 2020 releases from custody, successful participants were less likely to be reincarcerated than those who did not participate or those who were removed from the program. Incarcerated individuals who participate in select CoreCraft programs are eligible for a limited credit time allowance, which reduces their sentence by six months. Examples include receiving certification as an optician from the American Board of Opticianry and receiving an asbestos handling certificate from the Department of Labor. In addition to the benefit of a sentence reduction, these individuals reenter the community with an industry-recognized credential. Two years ago, Governor Hochul announced her Jails to Jobs Initiative, an effort to improve reentry into the workforce and reduce recidivism through education, resources, and job placement. CoreCraft is actively engaging with employers in the community to connect participants with employment opportunities. As such, the program is advancing the governor's Jails to Jobs Initiative by equipping the incarcerated population with the skills needed to secure employment upon the release. CoreCraft continues to serve as a valuable asset to the incarcerated population, the department, and the state. The use of preferred sources streamlines the procurement process, saves taxpayer dollars, and provides quality items to government agencies and nonprofit organizations. The revenue generated from sales is used exclusively to operate the program and invest in equipment and training, which directly benefits the program participants. The Correctional Industries Program not only represents a smart use of public funds, but it serves as a meaningful investment in reducing the future tax burden by sending an individual back to their community with a better chance for success when they entered the system. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today. I would be happy to address any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. And before we get to Commissioner, the other Commissioner here, Commissioner Moy. Deputy, are we to assume that you're in charge of CoreCraft as the deputy commissioner?
I am, Senator.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Moy?
Thank you. Hello? Can you hear? Wonderful. Greetings, Chair Scoofus, and Salazar, and Meyry, and distinguished members of the legislature. My name is Jeanette Moy, and I'm the Commissioner for the New York State Office of General Services. Thank you for the opportunity to share information about the Preferred Source Program and OGS's responsibilities underneath the statute. OGS provides a wide variety of operational support services for New York State agencies so that they can focus on delivering on their core missions effectively and efficiently. We manage over 20 million square feet of real property, process transactions for 44,000 state employees, administer food distribution programs, and assist state agencies with warehousing and distribution efforts, manage design and construction activities for 50 state agencies, and we maintain a portfolio of 1,500 centralized contracts with a maximum value of $30 billion. These contracts enable our authorized users to easily purchase what they need. Our role in administering portions of the Preferred Source Program is one of our many efforts to ensure that our customers are able to procure commodities and services at best value while balancing desired social and economic outcomes for New York State. The Preferred Source Program designates certain providers of commodities and services as having preferred source status under Section 162 of state finance law. As a result of such designation, the acquisition of approved commodities or services from the preferred sources is exempted from statutory competitive bidding and procurement requirements. State agencies, political subdivisions, and public benefit corporations must purchase approved products and services from preferred sources when the offering meets the purchasing agency's form, function, and utility requirements. There are three preferred source providers: the Correctional Industries Program of the Department of Corrections and Community Supervision, also known as CoreCraft; the New York State Preferred Source Program for New Yorkers who are blind, also known as PSP; and the New York State Industries for the Disabled, RMI-SID. Purchasing priority is accorded to the preferred sources in that order. Under state finance law, the Office of General Services is tasked with maintaining a list of all approved commodities and services available from the preferred sources. CoreCraft's preferred service offerings include commodities in the following categories: license plates, office, educational, and institutional furniture and equipment, textile and apparel goods such as bed sheets and uniforms, printing and signage, soap and janitorial supplies, and eyeglasses. CoreCraft also provides services that agencies may elect to purchase. However, CoreCraft services do not have preferred source status under the law. New or substantially different commodities and services may be added to the list of source offerings, preferred source offerings, such as commodity or service that has been approved by the State Procurement Council or OGS under its delegated authority. Preferred sources may appeal denials by the State Procurement Council to OGS. Preferred sources may also request the State Procurement Council remove a commodity or a service from the list of preferred service offerings. The State Procurement Council, established under state finance law Section 161, is a body of 21 members tasked with continuously striving to improve the state's procurement processes and is responsible for the study, analysis, development of recommendations, and guidelines governing public procurement in New York State. The State Procurement Council holds quarterly public briefings and is chaired by OGS or my designee. Members include the State Controller, the Department of the Budget, the Commissioner of Economic Development, or ASD, the Chief Diversity Officer, and seven heads of various state agencies appointed by the governor, one member of a not-performed organization representing New York grown farm or agricultural interests appointed by the governor, and eight at-large members appointed by legislative leaders. When a preferred source makes an application to add a new or substantially different commodity or service to the list of preferred service offerings, the Procurement Council is tasked with reviewing the application for various costs and benefits. As staff to the Procurement Council, OGS facilitates this review alongside carrying out its statutory responsibilities to approve pricing for applications from PSP and NISID. In reviewing the prices of NISID and PSP preferred source offerings, OGS seeks to ensure that the prices are as close to prevailing market price as practicable. For NISID and PSP, prices may not exceed 15% above prevailing wage prices for equivalent commodities or services. OGS is not involved in reviewing the pricing of CoreCraft commodities except in the pace of a pricing appeal by a purchasing agency, which OGS reviews alongside the Department of Budget and the Commissioner for the Department of Corrections and Community Supervision or their designees. There have not been any such appeals by any purchasing agency contesting the price of a CoreCraft commodity in recent years or recent memory. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Before we jump into it, I want to acknowledge we've been joined by Senator Omarra. I'll lead it off, and my first question is to DOCS. How are the prices determined for these goods?
Hello?
There you go.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the question, Senator. So, based on the law, DOCS establishes their price points based on the cost to make the individual item, or when costs exceed fair market value, then we default to the fair market value. We must run all pricing through the Director of the Budget for final approval. We make a recommendation through my office to the Director of the Budget, and then that's approved for.
Understood. Thank you for that explanation. One would assume, I would certainly assume, not knowing anything else, that given the wages associated with constructing, developing these goods, and we're talking anywhere from 15 cents to 65 cents per hour that incarcerated individuals are earning, that the products that are ultimately sold to agencies and local governments would be substantially lower than what you can find in Staples or on Amazon or even at the wholesaler level? And is that a fair assumption that one could make?
Well, I don't agree with that assumption. I mean, I've absolutely heard that. In response to that, I would say, you know, I think the.
But if an American company, let's say it's a good that's made in the United States, but an American company here in New York has to pay their employees at least $15 an hour to build that chair, and you guys are paying 15 cents an hour to build an equivalent chair, how is it not a fair assumption that that chair that you guys make should be cheaper?
Yeah, so the first misconception is that we are primarily a business. We're not. We are primarily a program that are providing skills to incarcerated individuals to return to their communities.
Agreed, and that's more reason to believe that that assumption should be true is because there's no profit, or there shouldn't be any profit, associated with the goods that you make.
Sure. So, as I said in my testimony, CoreCraft also employs 230 state employees with an FTA count that could go up to 280. As part of paying that, we have to abide the union contracts, as well as working through an enterprise fund, an internal services fund. We also, unlike individuals in the general fund employees, we have to pay fringe benefits. So, on top of the commodities in the industries, the actual, the supplies to purchase. So, all of that taken into account drives the cost of the product itself, as well as when we go over, we default to the fair market value.
But you do note in your testimony that one of the benefits of this program is it's a cost savings to taxpayers. I assume, if you can see this far, you can probably recognize what product this is. This is the CoreCraft hand soap foam that could be found in the LOB and I suspect most government offices here in New York State. And so, the CoreCraft cost is $15.63 per gallon for this foaming hand soap. This is an equivalent product that is found on a wholesaler-type outlet at $8.91 per gallon, nearly half the cost of the price that comes out of CoreCraft. And I guess if you're a taxpayer, and you are looking at that, and you're a taxpayer who pays town taxes, and the CoreCraft hand soap is in the town hall and town courthouse, and if you're a county taxpayer, and it's in your county government center, you're paying double what could be easily, readily found at a wholesaler level. How do you justify that to taxpayers?
So, again, Senator, if an entity.
And do you want to amend your remarks that this program is a savings to taxpayers? How could it be a savings when taxpayers are paying double for a product like this?
Again, the overall savings to the taxpayer is the streamlining of the procurement process and avoiding the need to go out and do lengthy procurements, which take administrative burden away from the entities. Certainly, we can go online and look at different products. I'm sure we can find products that are more and less than what CoreCraft's charging. Again, we go on cost and fair market value.
Is it fair to?
If an entity, a municipality, has a challenge to the price, usually they typically engage us, and we engage in that discussion in terms of the price point, how we got there, and how it compares to farm market.
Is it fair to note that there's no administrative burden, there's no bidding process, if the products that are being sought are below the bidding threshold?
That's accurate.
Right.
That's accurate.
Okay, and I suspect most towns and villages and even counties are probably not buying six figures worth of hand soap.
I would probably guess that that would be right.
Right, so there'd be no administrative savings. I've got some other questions, but I'll turn it over to Senator Salazar.
Thank you, Senator Scoofus, and thank you all for your testimony. Want to start by asking, so the prevailing wage for an individual who does mold or asbestos abatement in New York City right now is $44.50 an hour, according to the Department of Labor. This is over 3,000% more than the highest wage that an incarcerated individual who does that exact same labor for CoreCraft earns, or 34 times more. Why should someone who performs this same labor at, say, Auburn Correctional Facility be paid 3,000% less than someone who performs the same labor elsewhere?
I assume that's for me, right?
What's that?
I assume that's for me, right?
Sure.
So, I appreciate the question and absolutely appreciate what the market value is in the communities, which is why this is such of a valuable program with individuals leaving with certifications so they can have gainful employment. But the program actually teaches them, when they come to the program and they initiate, they don't have that background. We build the skills necessary, both hard and soft, to allow an individual to gain that certification and be granted by DOL and transition. Now, it's not to say that we shouldn't be looking at incarcerated wages. Since I've assumed operational oversight on June 9th, it's something I'm definitely interested in looking at and engaging with my principals at the Division of the Budget. It requires their approval to change incarcerated wages. So, it's definitely something that we absolutely need to look at.
Yeah, I absolutely agree, and it's incumbent on us as the legislature to act on that as well. For these same workers who are, let's say, doing asbestos abatement or mold abatement, what safety equipment is provided to those workers who perform this, you know, work that comes with real health risks on the work sites, whether they're inside a DOCS facility or outside?
Yeah, we strictly follow DOL, PESH, and OSHA standards. In fact, we're providing training on OSHA 10 to incarcerated individuals, but they get the gowns, the mask, the respirators, just like anyone in the community. They learn how to utilize those pieces of equipment, and then recognize, we teach them the importance of that, so we don't cut corners. They don't cut corners even as they transition out into the community. Safety is a huge proponent of the skills that we provide individuals, particularly in working in this environment.
And so, how would you characterize CoreCraft's relationship with the Department of Labor, given that incarcerated workers are not really covered by labor law? At least in the way that traditional workers are?
Sure. We still have DOL comes in, and they can do site visits and unannounced visits, and look at our program, particularly around that this is a certified program, that they get a certification through DOL apprenticeship. They have full access to review the safety protocols, as well as we have civilian staff that are associated as teachers in this program as well. So, DOL is a great partner in terms of our certifications. We have, outside of CoreCraft, in addition to abatement, we have 12 certifications that we work on apprenticeships through DOL with.
And do you know, would you be able to tell me, the demographics of the workforce that is employed by CoreCraft?
I could certainly get you that. I know that as a department, 39% of our workforce are represented by members of the protected class. How that breaks down specifically into CoreCraft, that's something I could definitely follow up with you on directly.
Yeah, thank you. It'd be great to know, certainly, how it compares to the overall incarcerated population in DOCS. And a quick question for Commissioner Moy. You mentioned that an appeal by a purchasing agency regarding the prices of CoreCraft products has not been brought in recent memory. Is that correct?
That's correct.
If an appeal were brought by a purchasing agency, what would be the procedure for handling that appeal?
If appeal is brought, then that review would happen by the Office of General Services, Department of Budget, and my colleague here from the Department of Corrections.
So, if you don't mind, like, what would maybe be the first step specifically that you would take if an appeal were brought?
We'd have to look over the letter of the appeal and what the rationale and the details underneath that might be, and have that reviewed.
Okay, thank you. I have more questions, but I'll.
All right, hand it over to Senator Meyry. I want to acknowledge we've been joined by Senator Sepulveda. And I failed to mention at the start, Senator Cooney, who's Chair of Procurements, unfortunately had a family matter to attend to at home. He is a co-chair. He's attentively watching this hearing and will be participating in next steps following the hearing. With that, Senator Meyry.
Good morning, and thank you all for your attendance. I'm going to direct it first at the DOCS Commissioner and then at OGS. I come at this issue, I taught at Auburn Correctional Facility in law school. It was a transformative experience for me for many reasons, but what was really, I think, impactful was having to walk through the yard and to walk past the shops where they make the license plates in this state, and then to teach students who were predominantly from where I'm from, in Brooklyn. So, I want to focus for a second on the license plates. Am I correct in understanding that every single license plate in the state of New York is produced in a correctional facility?
That's correct, at Auburn.
Okay. And do we know how much those individuals make for producing license plates that are required on every single vehicle in the state of New York?
So, the law requires us to have a wage scale, so the industry wage scale starts at 16 cents and goes to 65 with production bonuses of up to 100%. So, it depends on what grade you are, what you're proficient in, how you've mastered the skills associated with the tasks.
Okay, so the maximum that an individual can make producing license plates that are, again, required on every vehicle is how much?
So, the straight wage is 65 if the bonus is included up to $1.30.
Okay, so $1.30 an hour. Wages haven't been raised since 1993. I'm heartened to hear that you're thinking about this and having discussions. We certainly have a role to play as the legislature in ensuring that policy sees its way through. I want to ask next about the notion that people cannot deny work. This is, we're in the process of amending the Constitution here in the state of New York, and part of the impetus for that is that the labor protections afforded to other people to refuse work, to examine the conditions under which they are working, are not present in correctional facilities. And so, I'm wondering if you can speak to any experiences that DOCS, or that you've heard of individuals not being able to refuse work inside a correctional facility?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I am familiar with the legislation relative to the constitutional amendment, so I'm not going to speak on that, obviously, because I have to follow processes outside of this. But I will speak directly in terms of the facility itself. Incarcerated individuals voluntarily participate in work assignments. The process embedded in the law is that us as an agency have to provide programmatic opportunities as well as work opportunities to the population. So, individuals, once they have their risk and needs assessment complete, they would appear before a program committee and be offered assignments, whether it's academic, vocational, and/or work assignments. But individuals at that program committee can decline to accept employment if it doesn't meet what they're interested in. So, it is a voluntary program. They're not mandated. Certainly, once they're working, obviously, just like in the general public, we just can't, you know, decide we're going to not work, but there's a process to relinquish that work assignment and go back before the program committee.
Okay, well, you know, I think part of the reason why we're having this hearing today, and I thank my co-chairs for helping to make this happen, is that I've heard different accounts about people's, the voluntary nature of this work. I've heard that both publicly, but I've also heard from incarcerated individuals who have written us letters in detailing the scenarios under which they have faced adverse consequences for refusing to work. And so, I'm hoping that we can get some clarity on that as we move forward in this process.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, any letters you get from the incarcerated population, please feel free to engage us, because I'd like to know about that myself. I mean, the process, as I described it, is what our policies say, it's what our procedures say. You know, again, embedded throughout the law, it does talk about if you're going to receive good time or merit time or LCTA, that you have to positively participate in either programs and/or work assignments. So, you know, sometimes how that fits in to the context of a letter, but glad to work with your office and address those more succinctly.
Thank you, and I'm being mindful of my time. I was going to ask you, Commissioner Moy, a question. I would just sort of summarize it, and hopefully we'll get to speak about it offline. But the practice of being as close to. the practice of being as close to market rate as possible, I think, is one that we should be discussing a more broad application, certainly in the CoreCraft context, as my colleague pointed out. The moral argument of having individuals being paid at maximum a dollar and 20 cents for something that is required in this entire state, to me, is a moral outrage, and we certainly shouldn't compound that moral outrage by ripping off our localities in what we are selling them as the product of what has been made inside. And so, thank you again for your time today and look forward to more conversation.
Thank you, Senator Myrie. Next, we'll go to Senator Martins.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I guess this is for the Commissioner or the Deputy Commissioner regarding employment at CoreCraft. Like I talked about, whether or not it's at-will, whether or not there's a contract with the individuals who do participate in the program, you know, just describe that for us briefly, because my understanding is it's not mandatory and that, you know, they have to opt into participating, knowing what the scale is, what they'll be doing, and the fact that they'll be participating in training of some sort that they can then use later on. But that relationship between CoreCraft and the individual is important to me, and I'm sure important to everyone here on the panel. Can you describe that for us?
Absolutely, Senator. Thank you so much for the question. There's an application process related to, you know, gaining employment with CoreCraft. And I'd just like to add that CoreCraft is actually a sought-after program within the department. In fact, we have a very active waiting list for, you know, incarcerated individuals that would like to get into the program. I would say that the, there is an educational requirement to work in CoreCraft. We expect candidates to either have high school equivalency or pursuing their high school equivalency. There's an interview that's related to that application process, and candidates are, as the Commissioner pointed out, reviewed by the program committee. They go through an orientation. It's much like a, you know, a civilian job orientation and application process. We try to make it a real-life opportunity and environment for the individuals, so we're certainly very pleased with the work that the incarcerated individuals are able to learn and achieve and really gain skills that could be used upon their return to the community.
So, it is initiated by the individual, and they fill out an application, they interview, and then if they are qualified, they are actually accepted to participate in the program. Is that right?
That is correct. And, you know, to just provide an example, a real-life example, we had an individual that was working in our optical program at Wallkill and had a medical issue, so he had to be moved to a facility that could accommodate his medical needs. So, he wrote to me, and I receive, you know, numerous letters daily, and advised me that, you know, he had satisfied his medical needs and wanted to know when he could return to the program so he could obtain his optinary license. And I'm just delighted that we were able to achieve that for him.
Just another question, and then I'll, I guess I'll pass it on, and I do have a few more, but I'll come back to it. Over the last 10 years or so, this legislature has increased minimum wage in New York State. As part of that process, are you aware of them having reached out to you, to any of you, to ask about the wages that are paid through CoreCraft and whether or not those wages would be changed as a result of the minimum wage so we can incorporate that into state law? Did anyone reach out to you with regard to that?
No, we're familiar with a few bills that are within the legislature and various committees, but I've not had any direct conversation with anyone in the legislature, other than in recent meetings over the past six to nine months.
So, over the course of the last however many years where we've been passing, considering and passing legislation here in the legislature in Albany, with regard to minimum wage, those minimum wage increases did not include incarcerated individuals that are participating in this CoreCraft program?
It did not. The only one thing I would like to add is I know that it has come up in past budget hearings with my predecessor, at least in conversation in terms of incarcerated wages.
And again, it hasn't as...
Oh, I appreciate it, Senator. No worries, no worries. Thank you, Senator Martins. We'll go to Senator Sepulveda.
Good afternoon. Sisong? Can anyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here.
Good morning.
So, the reason that CoreCraft, according to some information I've read, is considered a preferred vendor is because ostensibly they rely on the principles of free market to captive labor. How is it that you're able to maintain your preferred status, or the preferred status CoreCraft has, when in fact, the labor has nothing to do with free market labor? When you have incarcerated individuals that are compelled and are punished sometimes if they don't take to work? You guys know I've visited well over 13 facilities, and this is some of the complaints I had. While some people do acquire a trade, and you said you want to bring it as close to a real-life experience as possible, how do you do that? Paying someone 16 cents or 55 cents or a dollar and change, as top dollar? And how do you justify calling yourself a preferred vendor when in fact, there is no free market to the labor situation here?
Yeah, so, thank you for your question, Senator. You know, as I previously testified, the incarcerated wages is something I'm definitely interested in looking at, and we should, you know, have further discussions relative to that, and I've already began internally, as well as will be engaging my principals under the statute, which requires the Division of the Budget's approval. But in terms of the overall...
Commissioner, I'm starting to... You would be in favor of increasing, and at this level, significant increase would be $2 an hour, but you would be in favor of increasing the hourly wage of incarcerated individuals working for CoreCraft?
Yeah, I've already begun to look at that, absolutely. And not just CoreCraft, incarcerated wages, period.
Okay.
In terms of the preferred source, my understanding of the statute, to Senator Scoopis' point that passed over 200 years ago, was really around addressing and advancing special social and economic goals, recognizing, you know, I think the legislature way back then, the importance of giving people skills to return to communities so that they can have gainful employment and have housing and, you know, access to schooling and things of that nature provided for the family themselves. That was really the genesis of us being a preferred source in the law. And then, it's really on manufacturing. As the Commissioner pointed out, it's not based on services. So, as part of that, and I really don't look at CoreCraft as a business, I look at it as a program. We are first and foremost a program. We do not make profits. We're lucky we break even, barely, and in some years, we make, we have actually a deficit, because we are primarily providing people the training and the requisite skills to return to the community to be gainful employees in society. As part of that, we employ up to 280 individuals under appropriation authority, which is $76.8 million in this current, or current budget, which we're working on, as well as in the recommended budget. So, that focuses on paying for the staff, and we also have to pay their fringe benefits, where general fund employees, that's paid out of the central approach, that actually has to be paid by CoreCraft through the enterprise fund. It's a fund that is solvent and must continue to take in the money, as well as be expended on the program itself. It's not swept to the general fund, it is focused on the participants in the program as a whole.
If you say it's not a profitable venture, you barely break, would you be considerate the concept of bringing a private entity that will train them? Because I know there've been several lawsuits against DOCS, and I know you just started, I'm not describing blame, I've worked well with you, but there've been multiple lawsuits where those that are incarcerated have been injured because of inadequate training for CoreCraft.
Yeah, so, we do, we do training, safety training, and make sure prior to anyone utilizing any machinery or working in the program, that they go through full safety protocols, sign that they acknowledge, but we're always looking to drive safety, so if there's a particular program that we're looking at, that you have some concerns about, I'm open to making sure that we're driving safety for the population and for our staff, because we want them to be safe.
What about, I'm sorry, I'm running out of time. Just, yeah.
Sorry.
Let me just finish, because I, you know, obviously, I believe that we should have a free-market economy, we should have corporate entity go in there and pay these individuals, let them negotiate their wages a little better, a little fairer. But as a human being, we know that slavery was abolished by the 13th Amendment. As a human being, I have a major problem, where the only location in the Constitution where slavery is allowed is for the individuals that are incarcerated. And in 2024, I find it highly offensive, the whole system. I think it's dehumanizing, and it's still a vestige of slavery that is a stain, not only in New York, but any state that ascribes to the notion of using prisoner labor and paying them 55 cents an hour. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Sepulveda. Next up will be Senator Rollison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of quick questions on the average age of a CoreCraft employee and the tenure within the program. Do you know that?
I do not know the average wage. It's something we can certainly get back to you on, specifically the wage breakdown.
About the age, I'm sorry, age?
The age, I'm sorry.
Age. And tenure within the program? How long individuals would normally stay in?
Well, we have a, you want me to take that? We have a three-year review period, you know, just to ensure that the IIIs are not getting too familiar with staff, but we do have some, you know, incarcerated individuals that could be in the program for over three years. But we do take a very close look at every worker at the 36-month mark.
And what do you see as far as the individuals that are working in the CoreCraft program? Are they also more likely, do you know statistically, are they in other programs as well within the facilities in which they're at?
Typically, an individual, as the Deputy Commissioner testified, has to have his high school diploma or GED. We do find that individuals in CoreCraft also pursue higher education, and then we work with them to make sure there's schedule adjustments. I was actually just out at our food production center, which is not CoreCraft, but that's in central New York, and we were given examples about how somebody wanted to pursue higher education in college, and we made sure to free them up so that they can have schedule adjustments, to make sure that they can pursue higher education. Academics is first and foremost.
And also, too, when individuals are released, what is, who have participated in CoreCraft, do you know what their, the rate of successful employment upon being released is, but, you know, with the CoreCraft and their background?
Yeah, so that's a hard number to land on, only because if an individual's not released to supervision...
You wouldn't know.
We're probably the last person they want to be in contact with. If they're under supervision, certainly, we track employment and housing and things of that nature. I would say, though, that germaine to your question is, based on a 2020 population of releasees, our recidivism rate of statewide, I'm proud to report, was 19.1, which the average around the country is around 40, so ours was 19.1, and CoreCraft is lower than that. They fare better than the general population, so their return to prison is lower than the totality of the population released.
And in my remaining seconds, just quickly, Commissioner, I thought you said, and I, the money that you are receiving from the purchase of the goods, that goes back to the facility in which they were made? Where does that money go? Or the general fund?
Not the specific facility, it goes into the Internal Services account to be used exclusively for the CoreCraft program.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Senator Rollison. Next up is Senator Palumbo.
Thank you, Chairman. Can you hear me okay? The light is permanently on on this microphone. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I just have a, just a few comments and then maybe just, and then a couple of quick questions that, you know, in my experience, having been a prosecutor dealing with incarcerated individuals, that there's a carrot-and-stick approach to this business. And so, there are some adverse consequences that we heard some of the panelists talk about previously. What sort of adverse consequences if, say, you don't show up for work in the CoreCraft program or something along those lines, would someone face?
Yeah, certainly, we recognize that people are going to get sick and not be able to come to work, so obviously, they just wouldn't be paid for that day, but if we can continue to have repeat absenteeism, they would engage the incarcerated individual to find out why, is there something going on, whether it's medical, whether it's personal, to try to address that through their counselor, the Office of Mental Health, whatever services they otherwise need. If it's just because that they're not coming to work anymore, then we work towards removing them from the program, getting them back before the program committee to get them another assignment.
Certainly. A little similar to the real world. And Deputy Commissioner, yes, what were you going to say?
Correct, and certainly, if they're behavioral, if they're behavioral issues, they could be removed from the program as well.
Sure, and those are skills that are important in life. I think that, and I do think that the program is, it's an incredible opportunity, it is in fact, a program. Do you know if there are any numbers relative to the cost of the program, if you were to get into private business essentially and pay minimum wage to all those involved in the program, those 280 individuals? Do you have any idea what that cost burden would be?
The total FTE for civilian employees is 280. We have 230 now incarcerated, or 1,250 in the program. So, what that cost would be if we were to pay as we're in the community, I don't know that analysis.
Okay, understood. And ultimately, with respect to other funding streams, and that's really, I think, the concern here, that, and I know there was some comments, and we've heard them on the floor for years, that it's slavery, although it's voluntary, slavery was abhorrent, obviously, we all agree to the person about that, and this is something that's a voluntary program, teaching skills to incarcerated individuals. So, and I guess my comment, I don't know if you'd like to, in my remaining 40 seconds here, that if you wanted to maybe expound upon the fact that, in the event this becomes untenable, and everyone is so offended by the nature of the program, that incarcerated individuals, not only they're learning these skills, getting free training, but they're getting a stipend, if we want to call it that, do you have any comments with respect to whether, if the program were to be canceled ultimately, because it was untenable as far as financial, financially being able to be maintained?
Yeah, in terms of the overall program, again, I think it's a benefit to the incarcerated individuals, as well as the state as a whole, so I think that if we were to eliminate that program, we would be doing a disservice to the people that are entrusted to us, you know, we have an obligation to provide incarcerated individuals with the skills necessary to address their needs, their risk, and return to the community, right? People shouldn't be defined by the worst thing they've ever done and what maybe made them come to us. This is a opportunity to give them skills to return, be mothers, fathers, husbands, wives, parents, and really be productive members, and that's what we want them to do. I challenge them every time I'm in prison, is to never come back and see me once you get out, and they, you know, that's really my challenge to them, and in doing so, we have to make sure that we're giving them those skills to succeed when they return to the community. And this is just one of the many things, whether it's enrollment in Medicaid, or giving them academic education, or substance abuse, or MAT. Again, learning a trade, particularly where that is highly sought after in our communities right now, is absolutely a way to succeed with employment in the future.
And I would also add, Senator, that...
You can be brief, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would also add that, you know, we're obviously in the public safety business, and idleness is something of significant concern to us, so if the program is canceled, you know, we are looking at a, you know, a significant concern with idleness and how that may play out for the safety of our staff and the population, for sure.
Thank you, Senator. Next will be Senator Omaro.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, for being here this morning. You said there's a little over 1,000?
1,250, approximately.
Inmates that are working in CoreCraft?
Incarcerated individuals, yes.
Now, what's the inmate population total?
Approximately 32,750.
Okay, and you mentioned before that the inmates are required to do programming, whether it be CoreCraft or something else?
Well, again, in the law, it requires us to provide the opportunity, and at the program committee, after identifying the risk and needs, we assign them to what they need within their program. Some programs are mandatory, like if you have a substance abuse need, we have to make sure that you get into alcohol and substance abuse treatment, but in terms of work assignments and programs, they can decline, and that's their choice. There's just repercussions in terms of earning good time, merit time, or in this case, LCTA, which you have to actually work for a requisite period of time to receive.
But there are other programming opportunities outside of the CoreCraft opportunities?
Correct. We have a full slate of academic programs, vocational programs, as well, have recently just launched CDL, AutoTech, we're going to be launching a coding program, and so there's a full panoply of programs that we offer the population.
So, any inmate that...
So any inmate that was patently offended by the wage could choose not to work and take one of those opportunities in CoreCraft if they so chose?
Yeah. CoreCraft is totally a voluntary program, as are the other work assignments. And if they chose to engage in other programs, they'd have those opportunities.
Thank you. You know, as you know, I've toured with you a couple of these sites. I've found those opportunities for the population to be positive, and the interactions I've had with incarcerated individuals at that has been positive. So, you know, I commend the department for providing these opportunities and these career opportunities, and just regular work environment experience that I think bodes very well, and it's shown in the recidivism numbers that you've spoken of. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator O'Mara. In the interest of time, we're limiting second round to co-chairs. I know that Senator Myrie wants to kick things off in a second round. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Spolveda. So, just want to go to the sanitizer, again, in a little different context than my colleague presented. The hand sanitizer that was produced by incarcerated individuals at the height of the pandemic, I just want to confirm for the record that those individuals were not able to use the sanitizer that they were themselves producing?
That's not correct.
Okay. Can you elucidate, please?
Yeah, we did provide the hand sanitizer. There was initially a concern because of the high volume of alcohol content within it, but based on the pandemic and at the time, the proof that that level of alcohol was necessary to kill the COVID, we did allow for it. We installed it in high-volume areas throughout the facilities with pumps going into the mess hall, coming out of the yard, in the program areas, as well as making it available in the housing areas. Unfortunately, we did have a few instances where it was utilized to start fires. We had a complete loss of a housing unit at Groveland Correctional Facility. But again, that was the one-off. For the most part, it was used for the intended purpose, and it was freely available for the population as well as the staff.
Okay. And the notion that the CoreCraft is, at its core, a skill-building operation, you know, I don't think you'd find disagreement with anyone on this panel, that we want folks acquiring the skills necessary to be successful...
Of course.
...once they are outside. But I'm thinking about the hand sanitizer example and thinking about the license plate example. What transferable skills that are in high demand now in our communities do you think both of those things would provide for incarcerated individuals as they're out?
Yeah. You know, the hand sanitizer, I mean, certainly, obviously, there's companies that employ people to produce chemicals and things of that nature, so all those safety precautions. But I would say this, before the pandemic, we were not producing an alcohol-based hand sanitizer. This was a, you know, a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. It was something that we were tasked with doing. And I personally went and sat next to incarcerated individuals and filled bottles of Great Meadow, and they took such pride that the market was gouged, that their families couldn't get a hold of sanitizer, and that they wanted to give back. So I think that that was a unique opportunity where it really gave them a sense of pride that they were helping New Yorkers. In terms of the license plates, you know, that's something in statute that we make the license plates and we have an agreement. But I think of those hard and soft skill, or the soft skills that surround that, about recognizing coming to work, punching a time clock, having teamwork, having to be organized, those types of skills are transferable to anything. So maybe no one else is making license plates, obviously. That's our responsibility, right? But again, the skills that surround the soft skills to those individuals, I think, are irreplaceable and transferable.
Okay. And, you know, at the risk of being repetitive, I'm sure this will be a reoccurring theme throughout the hearing, one of the skills, I think, that are important for people to gain is knowing that you're going to get what you pay for, and that the labor that you put in, you will get the requisite compensation for that. And that is drastically out of whack as the current system operates. And so going out into the real world, one of my colleagues said that's how the real world operates. Well, in the real world, you don't get paid 60 cents an hour for work. I will close on this. The training to do these several things at CoreCraft, can you talk specifically about what type of training is provided and whether that is provided for all CoreCraft participants?
Yes. So depending on the nature of the work, there's obviously different types of training that's provided. For example, for our textile operation, there will be, you know, a vocational aspect to that where they're learning the basic skills of how to, you know, how to manufacture, you know, uniforms, et cetera, before they are, you know, placed in a production environment. So it's really, you know, not unlike any training that you would get from, you know, your employer when you start a new position. There's an orientation. They're not immediately thrown into, you know, this work environment. As the Commissioner pointed out, there is a pay scale. So, you know, there's something to, you know, aspire to and work toward. So that's essentially how that would work out.
Thank you. I yield the rest of my time, Chair.
Thank you. Next will be Senator Salazar.
Thank you. So, back to Commissioner Maricello. As you are well aware, eligible incarcerated individuals can receive a six-month limited credit time allowance benefit off their prison sentence, for example, for completing a CoreCraft program. Under current law, however, DOCS has unlimited discretion to deny or curtail an incarcerated individual's earned time or merit time credit. And this happens frequently enough that I hear about it directly when I visit DOCS facilities, people lamenting that they earned that time and then it was taken away from them for whatever the reason might be on a case-by-case basis. Do you think it is acceptable, given that merit time, in the case of participants in the CoreCraft program, is essentially something that they've earned through their labor, like a wage? Do you think it's acceptable that DOCS has complete discretion to, at a later point, withdraw that from them?
Yeah, I appreciate the question, and I do know that there is legislation pending that gets to the heart of this issue. So I'm going to try to focus on the actual process, and I don't know that we have unilateral discretion. So someone can earn it, certainly, and then they can engage in behavior, which would rise to the level of a Tier Three disciplinary infraction, which basically all Tier Threes now, depending on the actual misbehavior report, could rise to the level of a Tier Three, which coincides with the provisions of Halt. The hearing officer can recommend a loss of good time, but it's only a recommendation. When the individual is a few months in advance of their earliest release date, then a time allowance committee is met. However, if an individual, as part of that recommended loss of good time, receives confinement time, Halt also provides for if they substantially complete the program in a residential rehabilitation unit, there is a presumption that they get that good time back. So they actually have an ability for it to be lost, but they have an ability to make amends, recognizing people make mistakes, they engage in misconduct. So, and again, I don't want to go to the framers, because I know that that's a lot of you folks up there. But in terms of how that now works, where before, we would look at the body of work, and once they were engaged in that type of behavior, we would do an assessment, and this committee would make a recommendation, they would adopt it, and then the appeal would be to central office. But now the legislature has given a framework where the incarcerated individual, where they made this mistake and engaged in this misconduct, if they go to an RRU and substantially complete, which is our hope, right? Give them programs to address the underlying behavior that got them there, that they can get that time back. So it's no longer that we can mandatorily take that away forevermore.
Thank you. And I know that Senator Myrie alluded to this, but as DOCS mentions in testimony, recidivism among individuals who complete CoreCraft program after release, recidivism is tracked, or at least, you know, it must be in order for you to have that data. Do we also know what kind of jobs people obtain after release, if they are relevant to the skills that they gained through the CoreCraft program, or if they actually don't end up using those skills on the outside?
Yeah, as I previously mentioned, it depends on, you know, if the individual transitions to community supervision versus they go to the street for an ME, because, again, they don't typically want to engage with corrections once they've transitioned away, and I hope that they don't come back. We want to hear the success stories. We've put a big emphasis on employment with our parole officers. We now have employment POs, so we are drilling down on that statewide. In terms of CoreCraft itself, though, as we mentioned, we do reemploy formerly incarcerated individuals, both generally in the department but in the program, as well as we get letters back. We recently received letters back through the attrition program, where individuals are working in the community, providing eyeglasses, like a vision works, and things that you and I are going to be visiting in the community. So those skill sets. So a lot anecdotal right now, but we are drilling down on those that are on supervision.
And also, as a part of the Governor's JLSA Jobs Initiative, we're establishing a repository of possible or potential employers that would, you know, employ the formerly incarcerated as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Senator Salazar. I'll jump in here, and I'd like to return to the conversation, if I may, on cost savings or potential cost savings. Commissioner, do you have any, again, you've stated and you've underscored your belief that this program does save taxpayer funds, or is a net savings? Is there any evidence to back that up? Have you done any kind of analysis? Any, is there any report to point to that absent CoreCraft, the cost to local municipalities and state agencies and taxpayers would be higher than they are right now?
No, I don't have a report. It's, you know, just the basis of the program that it avoids the lengthy procurement processes. And the other thing that I want to point out is that, you know, there's a process by which if somebody can get it cheaper, or if it doesn't meet their form, function, and utility, last year, we granted 278 waivers through this process. We had zero that were denied. And when municipalities don't come to us in the first instance, we've submitted zero requests to OGS to try to enforce that. So certainly, there's a process built into the preferred source, form, function, and utility, and obviously, a cost. And even if it doesn't reach an appeal, as you heard my colleague mention, that we're on a way off any appeals, we work with them directly to educate them on the cost.
I appreciate it.
You brought up the Staples example. I think you really have to look at the overall product that's produced versus, you know, the...
Of course. It's got to be an apples-to-apples comparison.
Thank you.
No question about it.
Thank you.
You mentioned, I think, 278 waivers. Out of how many procurement actions does that 278 come from? Is it tens of thousands? Is it...
I can get you the breakdown. I mean, the majority of our business come from DOCS itself, and then other state agencies, followed by New York City, and then the municipalities drop off from there. We do do some business with...
But given the fact that we've got, you know, literally over 1,000 municipalities in the state, I imagine the denominator is a very, very large number.
Well, I don't think that they're all coming to us for, with their business. And as I mentioned, instead of us going to enforcement, we go to Sal's and try to educate people on the social benefits of the program, how it drives public safety...
I appreciate that.
And then we could streamline the procurement process.
Commissioner Moy, as the Commissioner tasked with making sure that our government offices are responsibly furnished and equipped, and you're doing so in a fiscally prudent way, do you agree with your fellow Commissioner that CoreCraft is a savings to the state?
Every time we need to do a purchase, we are looking at form, function, utility. That is part of the process when we are looking at any sort of build-out. We then go...
I understand what you're supposed to examine, but on the whole net, do you believe that CoreCraft saves state tax dollars?
We have not come across an instance in which we've had to appeal the pricing relative to some of the bids that have come in. When we go to CoreCraft, we notice that we're doing so, whether it is a, you had mentioned furniture, whether it is a bookcase, or a cubicle, or it is, you know, lateral file cabinets, we are talking to CoreCraft about those needs. It is true...
Have you done any reporting, any analysis, any evaluation?
The evaluation for pricing is determined under state finance law by DOCS, DOB, and they review the CoreCraft commodities for...
I understand, but that doesn't preclude you as OGS from taking a look and seeing if you're getting a good deal or not for your government offices?
The pricing that we've seen have not risen to the occasion that we are putting in an appeal.
Okay. So you've seen no evidence or reporting or analysis that demonstrates savings?
I appreciate the question, Senator, and I think if there are specific items that you'd like to bring, we are certainly more than happy to review them and give you...
I appreciate that. So I've got a list here. This is, it looks like, basically, virtually all of the janitorial products that are offered by CoreCraft come in at a substantially higher price than what's readily available through bulk purchasing websites for janitorial services. We've seen, again, you know, once you leave products like that, it's a little bit harder to determine exact apples-to-apples, but comparable office supplies like desks and chairs, we've seen significant markups compared to what's readily available. And so, again, as OGS Commissioner, does, do those price differentials alarm you as the Commissioner tasked with making sure that we're furnishing and equipping our offices appropriately?
I appreciate the question. I will note that when this program began, the preferred source program altogether, not just for CoreCraft, but certainly for NICED and for PSP, the goal and the intention was to say that there were a certain number of commodities, services, in which the state, as part of our values, were to purchase those items through specific preferred sources. So, you know, there is a price differential that exists for all types of programs. It doesn't exceed 15% outside of CoreCraft for some of the other services. And part of that is a decision that was made when the legislature and the executive worked together to enact these rules and these regulations. So there are price differentials that exist, with the idea that those purchases allowed for individuals who might not get otherwise traded or jobs.
My time is up. So I just want to ask one last question. And I totally understand, I think we all do, that, you know, OGS is not in a position to supersede state statute. And you rightfully point out that CoreCraft is preferred source. There is not that 15% cap that exists with the other two preferred sources. So let me ask the question this way. Do you believe that CoreCraft should be a preferred source?
The goal of our organization is to oversee and manage and support the procurement council, be followed by state guidelines, to the extent that there is any request or decision between the legislature and the executive to reexamine changes to the program.
So you have no opinion, as Commissioner?
We stand at the ready to implement. That's part of our job to do what is necessary for the state. But certainly, if there are changes, we stand at the ready to implement them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, Senator.
I believe that wraps up our first panel. I want to thank you truly on behalf of my colleagues up here.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Next, second panel will include the Correctional Association of New York, Worth Rises, Yale Law School, Law of Racial Justice Center, Cornell University, and the Legal Action Center. Worth Rises isn't here yet. You made it.
I did. I appreciate it.
Welcome to our second panel. We do have written testimony up here, so to the extent that you can consolidate your remarks, we do read the stuff, our staff reads the stuff up here. But if, and given just the volume of witnesses, if you can, again, be succinct. First, though, as we do with the first panel, if you could all please raise your right hand, and do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
I know.
Thank you. Okay. Why don't we go this way down the panel, and if you could introduce yourself and share your remarks?
Sure. Thank you. I'm not sure if it's good morning or good afternoon now. I think good morning for a few more minutes. And thank you, Senators, for inviting me today to testify about CoreCraft's practices and monopoly. My name is Kayla Vincent. I'm the Executive Director of the Law and Racial Justice Center at Yale Law School, and I've previously lawyered on behalf of the incarcerated and engaged in public education about the history of racial injustice in the United States, and how it helps us to see the connections between chattel slavery and prison slavery. I'm here because I want to speak in support of the Fairness and Opportunity for Incarcerated Workers Act, which, together with the No Slavery in New York Act, would overhaul the exploitative prison labor system in New York's prisons, which is a system that CoreCraft's business model depends on. Across the nation, over the last five years, state governments have begun to recognize that the kind of labor bondage that the Thirteenth Amendment was supposed to end still exists today in the form of prison slavery. Collectively, we have... towards hard labor and brutal punishment as so-called rehabilitation. And this model quickly came to be seen as a way to maintain the economic exploitation that was the heart of chattel slavery. As in other parts of the country, the Auburn system initially used convict leasing, through which incarcerated people were leased out to private entities. But towards the end of the 19th century, New York altered this system, switching from private exploitation of incarcerated people to direct state-based exploitation. And in 1893, at the Auburn prison, CoreCraft, as it is now known, was officially organized. To understand these connections, I think it's helpful to note the basic business model of chattel slavery. First, chattel slavery was an economic system that used the force of law to redistribute the labor power of enslaved people to their legal owners. These owners had complete power over what was produced, when, and under what conditions. Enslaved people had no control over when, where, or how they worked. Second, the business model relied on the legal use of punishment, often brutal and inhumane forms of punishment, as a coercive tool to extract labor and compliance. And third, the products of chattel slavery were embedded so deeply into economic life that the reach of people complicit in its use went well beyond enslavers, to include everyday consumers, overseers, bankers, shop owners, and more. We are a century and a half removed from the end of legalized chattel slavery, and yet what I have just described is the basic business model of CoreCraft. It relies on an economic system that uses the force of law to redistribute the labor power of incarcerated people to public institutions and nonprofit agencies throughout New York. CoreCraft controls what is produced, when, and under what conditions, it relies on paying close to nothing to make revenue. Incarcerated workers have little to no say over when, where, or how they work, and some are assigned to work for CoreCraft as an educational program. Second, heretofore, CoreCraft relies on DOCS to punish incarcerated workers as a coercive tool. Those who refuse to work may face disciplinary sanctions, a reduced likelihood of parole and sentence reduction, and wage deductions by way of attachment, garnishment, fees, and fines, and other forms of carceral punishment. Incarcerated workers also live in fear of retaliation for attempting to report their health and safety concerns. And third, as with chattel slavery, the products of prison slavery are everywhere and implicate everyone. CoreCraft goods can be found in public business, public buildings in every corner of New York State, from hand sanitizer to the barbecue grills in state parks, from school lockers to fire hydrant caps, and every person registered to drive in the state of New York is required to use a license plate produced by incarcerated workers for CoreCraft. In other words, CoreCraft's model is old wine in new skin. After the 13th Amendment was passed, some saw an opportunity to use the prison system to continue the business model of chattel slavery, by shifting ownership of people and their labor from individual enslavers to the state itself. Whereas before, the state had granted to others the legitimate use of slave labor by law, now the state uses the law to grant that power to itself. And New York, CoreCraft is the engine through which this happens. It operates with the purpose of creating revenue or cost savings that inure to the benefit of the state, and it does this by redistributing the labor power of incarcerated workers away from those workers and to CoreCraft in New York. By granting preferred status to CoreCraft and encouraging public agencies to first look there as a supplier, the state of New York and this legislature further ensures that the company can raise revenue from its exploitative practices.
If I may not interrupt, if you can wrap up relatively quickly, the 10 minutes were supposed to be for the whole panel, which is not realistic, obviously, we'll go a little bit over that, but if you could please wrap up, thank you.
Sure, I'll just say that those working for CoreCraft work for nominal wages, more than half, make less than a quarter per hour, and 85% make less than 39 cents per hour, that minimum wage, that is allowed because New York has a much lower minimum wage for incarcerated workers, it hasn't changed since it was set at 10 cents in 1993. And for other companies to achieve what CoreCraft achieves, they would have to engage in wage theft, they would have to engage in workplace violations, and they would have to prevent their workers from organizing. And this legislature has the opportunity to say that in New York, all workers have the right to labor with dignity, with meaningful opportunities for employment, and under safe and humane working conditions, the 13th Amendment is a floor and not a ceiling, and this body can set it higher for New York.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much to the chairs of the respective committees that convened this hearing, my name is Megan French-Marslin, I represent the Legal Action Center, we do lots of things, but relevant to this hearing is we lead the statewide Alternatives to Incarceration and Reentry Coalition, which is a network of organizations with decades of experience providing holistic, community-based supports. As a collective, we serve more than 25,000 justice-involved individuals each year. I am here to talk about how CoreCraft functions, which we don't know a lot of, even after that last panel, I'm left with more questions than answers. In 2020, Legal Aid Society foiled DOCS for some of this information, and that information showed how, just how pervasive CoreCraft is in our daily life. In preparation for this hearing, I did a little exercise, and I polled some of the expenditures from the counties you all represent. In Kings County, which encompasses Senator Salazar and Senator Myrie's districts, and of whom I'm a constituent, the county purchased just $225 in about a three-year period from CoreCraft. In Senator Cooney's district of Monroe County, they purchased about $2.4,000 worth of products from the company. And, most shockingly, in Senator Schufus's home district of Orange County, they purchased in just three years, $2.3 million worth of goods from CoreCraft. So you can see in New York State, and in this room, and in your offices, CoreCraft is ubiquitous. So part of the reason for that is this preferred vendor status. Preferred vendor status for state-led industries is actually not that unique, state governments do it, municipalities do it, federal agencies do it, it's kind of how we govern our economy. And the market rationale is that these lists, where vendors have supposedly already been vetted, lower the risk for the lack, where there might be a lack of quality assurance, or waste, or gaps in the supply line. And, as we heard from the commissioner, those lists can also be applied for other purposes of making the market more quote-unquote equitable. But the only reason that CoreCraft's status as a preferred vendor is distinct is because it applies the principles of making a free market to captive labor. It simultaneously ascribes CoreCraft a status not of any preferred vendor, but the preferred vendor of the state. Thus, it requires that counties, municipalities, and state agencies purchase from CoreCraft before any other vendor in the state when possible. That means that since 1990, CoreCraft has seen $2 billion in revenue that was distributed back into the state after accounting for operations, so CoreCraft is big business, just putting it out there. The last audit of the supply quality was conducted by the New York State Comptroller a decade ago. That in itself should beg questions, right? Why are we not auditing this practice every single year? It found that the assurances of the competitive process that are generally assumed in industry standards were just not there for CoreCraft. The audit revealed a concerning lack of procedure designed to ensure that the New Yorkers who are required to buy from CoreCraft receive the best overall value. The Comptroller's report warned that CoreCraft's competitive bidding process was inadequate to ensure both quality and fair pricing. And indeed, auditors pointed to processes, yeah, I'll wrap it up, by which CoreCraft employees who were responsible for developing and issuing the bids were also the ones evaluating the bids, issuing quality assurance reports, awarding contracts. The result was that the process was neither fair nor impartial, and the selected bids suggested that they weren't at all. And I will just say, in 84% of the awarded contracts, which totaled over $25 million in state funding, quality assurance reports were either missing or incomplete. There's a lot more to say on that, but I will just say, as a final question, that the question in front of us is really actually not that much about CoreCraft and the state law that governs it, it's actually about whether we as a state, and you as a governing body, believe that our economy should be reliant on the hyper-exploitation of our incarcerated workers, thank you.
Thanks very much, and I appreciate abridging some of the prepared remarks, and just know that you'll have an opportunity to share the balance during questions and answers as well, no doubt, please go ahead.
All right, thank you. Good morning, everyone, and thanks Senator Schufus, of course, Senator Salazar, Senator Cooney, and Senator Myrie, members of the legislature. My name is Jody Anderson, and I've been navigating the journey from incarceration as a youth to receiving my associate's degree through Cournos Prison Education Program, and going on to earn a bachelor's and master's degree at Stanford, I'm now the director of tech innovation at Cournos.
Sorry, did you pull the mic a little away from you?
Yeah, a little away?
A little away from you, yeah.
How's that?
Thank you.
Okay, solid. I'm responsible for building technical solutions for individuals to gain access to employment or educational opportunities. So both my personal and professional experience have provided me with a unique perspective on the practice of CoreCraft, so I'll speak about that. My firsthand experience with CoreCraft during my incarceration reveals some of the stark realities of what is often touted as a rehabilitation program. The work while providing a rudimentary form of occupation offered little in terms of fair compensation, or genuine skill development that would actually aid in my reintegration into society. I earned 16 cents, quite literally, an hour for my work in the basement of an industrial building located at Auburn Correctional Facility, using heavy machinery to make license plates that are on all of our cars today. This experience was not unique to me, but shared by other individuals who work under similar conditions at this very moment. The possibility of having a voice or simply engaging in discussions about wages, bargaining for better pay, or addressing grievances about our assignments was nonexistent, any attempt to broach these subjects could lead to severe repercussions, these aren't theoretical, these are real, including solitary confinement, disciplinary action, and the potential loss of good time credit, which is essential for any hope of early release. Assigned to CoreCraft, my role in license plate making wasn't dictated based on my skills or educational background, but purely by the facility's staffing needs, this committee that I've heard of earlier, figment. I was enrolled in a Cournos Prison Education Program during my time in industry, and often had to forego pursuing being a student at times because of my assignments at CoreCraft, so there's no programming done in the afternoon because you are assigned and forced to work inside of the shop. I think one of the most glaring deficiencies of the CoreCraft system is its failure to provide incarcerated workers, again, emphasis on workers, with opportunities for educational advancement, upskilling, or reskilling that would facilitate meaningful career growth. Despite long hours spent in labor, there were no components for me and others within the CoreCraft framework that offer certifications or formal acknowledgements of the skills acquired, which could have been instrumental in securing employment upon release, although that eventually happened for myself. The restrictive policies governing incarcerated workers' rights to discuss wages, form unions, or challenge their work conditions not only contravene basic labor rights, but also hinder the potential for genuine skill development and rehabilitation. The practice of assigning work based on facility needs rather than an individual's interests or career aspirations further exacerbates the disconnect between the stated goals of prison labor programs like CoreCraft and their actual implementation. The lack of educational vocational training opportunities within the CoreCraft system represent a missed opportunity for actual rehabilitation. By prioritizing labor over learning, these policies stifle the potential for incarcerated workers to develop marketable skills and gain qualifications that could facilitate their transition back into the workforce, I got you. These restrictive policies of the CoreCraft system and similar labor practices have profound implications for the economic, social, and psychological well-being of incarcerated individuals. Addressing these issues require a comprehensive reevaluation of current practices, as some of my partners are saying, and the implementation of reforms that prioritize rehabilitation, equitable wages, actual education, and fair labor standards. And I'll leave it there, appreciate your time. Yeah, no sweat.
Good afternoon, my name's Sumit Sharma, I'm a director at the Correctional Association of New York, just want to thank everyone, the senators, for inviting us to this hearing and this opportunity to testify, and our panel members for also providing testimony. The Correctional Association of New York, under Section 146 of the state's correction law, provides oversight of state correctional facilities, and reports on living and working conditions, the treatment of incarcerated individuals, and status of policy implementation. To, you know, very old organization, so I won't go into all the history, but we don't provide oversight of state government procurement processes or governmental operations at large, but we could offer context and insight into the history and current functioning of the prison industry. Established in 1893 as the Division of Industries at Auburn, it was interesting that the Correctional Association of New York, back in 1885, described the practice at Auburn as slave labor, since Auburn was the first prison in the country to turn a profit by leasing the labor, you know, to incarcerated people, to local manufacturers. Currently, accord, just said, forward. So as part of our oversight, we observe industry programs in operation during monitoring visits across the state. I want to pull in some of those observations that we saw. We saw factory-like settings, where incarcerated workers manufacture mattresses using college dorm stories across the state, we visited Great Meadow, we saw monitors taking note of the CoreCraft factory that produced hand sanitizer, and at Auburn, like many of us have already spoken to today, we did see a 90-year-old machine where incarcerated, six incarcerated individuals were working to rapidly create license plates, taking bars and stamps and moving them around quickly. Some incarcerated people we spoke to on some of these prison monitoring visits did feel that since CoreCraft jobs were the highest-paying jobs available in a prison, that they appreciated the chance to have that job because it would pay 65 cents an hour and provide a chance for a bonus. There were the well-specific, there was a comment from someone who was working as a welder to build the city grills for the city parks in the state of New York, who appreciated that there were certifications involved with welding that she'd be able to utilize during employment. She also spoke to the 65 cents being the main reason for being in the program because she had to work to, I guess, address the rising cost of living in prisons, which is another issue that comes up frequently on monitor visits, there's a rising price as far as access to goods, access to goods in the commissary, access to goods in the packages, phone calls thereafter, all of which people pay with from these wages. To touch on some data points, outside of CoreCraft, and we heard the numbers from the commissioner earlier, are out, around 1,100 people assigned to a CoreCraft job, but the vast majority of incarcerated individuals do not participate in CoreCraft programs, and instead access other mandatory and voluntary programs. And to compare, we have roughly 3,000 incarcerated people in vocational programs as of January 2022, 6,000 in educational programs, and 14,000 individuals with other job assignments with the wages ranging from 10 cents an hour to 65 cents an hour. Placement in these programs is determined by the procedure outlined in the DOCS guidance and counseling directive number 4401. They're made on assessed need, and if an incarcerated individual refuses an assignment to a program, they're advised that their refusal can deny, can result in the denial of parole, loss of good time, credit time, presumptive release, and earned eligibility program certificate, ineligible ability for area of preference transfer, placement in the proximity to minor child program, and/or placement in other programs, future pay grades, earned housing, and the family reunion program. Okay. Pay rates are determined by Directive 4802, incarcerated payroll standards, which you could take a look at, if you're yourself. To wrap things up, taken holistically, there needs to be, the state and policymakers would benefit from an in-depth analysis of the costs associated with operating CoreCraft programs, which also keeps in mind spending on programs that, you know, would provide- the proximity to minor child program, and/or placement in other programs, future pay grades, earned housing, and the family reunion program. Okay. Pay rates are determined by Directive four-eight-zero-two incarcerated payroll standards, which you could take a look at, if you're yourself. To wrap things up, taken holistically, there needs to be, the state and policymakers would benefit from an in-depth analysis of the costs associated with operating core craft programs, which also keeps in mind spending on programs that, you know, would provide value on the reentry side that might have to be done later down the rate. And we also urge the legislature to act in the short term to alleviate long-term stagnant prison wages by supporting any measure to increase wages for incarcerated individuals, including measures like the Prison Minimum Wage Act, as well as the jails-to-jobs measure introduced by the governor in the past year to improve reentry into the workforce and reduce recidivism. At the very minimum, New York State should pay incarcerated people a fair wage for their work. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Worth Rises, welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here, Senator Soufis, Senator Salazar, Senator Myrie, and Senator Cooney is not here. My name is Bianca Tylek. I'm the Executive Director of Worth Rises. We're a national advocacy organization based here in New York and dedicated to ending the exploitation of people who are incarcerated and their loved ones. We also lead the federal effort to end the exception in the Thirteenth Amendment with the abolition amendment, working with senators and congress folks across the country on the abolition amendment, which now has bipartisan support. Thank you for this hearing on core craft and its preferred source status. I'm going to also step back to a bit of a historical and national context to understand where we fit here in New York. The history of carceral labor in New York, as it is in all states, really has its roots in the Thirteenth Amendment, which passed in eighteen sixty-five and is celebrated for having abolished slavery. The Thirteenth Amendment includes an exception clause that still allows slavery to be used as criminal punishment. This exception clause importantly was a compromise negotiated by then-slave states, and that was challenged by abolitionist legislators at the time, like Massachusetts Senator Charles Sumner. Yet it survived in that final amendment language, and the result was exactly as expected. The South, during Reconstruction era, and all over the country passed black codes that applied restrictions that only applied to black people, that then those violations led to criminalization, incarceration, and allowed for their re-enslavement. Almost overnight, the population in prisons and jails went from being predominantly black, predominantly white, to predominantly black across the country. And some of those prisons were then built on former plantations and engaged in practices, as some of the other panelists mentioned, of leasing people who are incarcerated, which started up here in New York. Well, New York didn't just start the practice of convict leasing, but also actually was one of the first to create a correctional industries that then became core craft, which it started in eighteen ninety-three, as was said. In nineteen thirty-five, Congress passed legislation to prohibit the private sector from accessing prison labor to manufacture products destined for interstate commerce. And it did that because of concerns around the implications for broader labor rights and protections. And so, following sort of that all the way up to nineteen seventies, there was a passage of another federal act that reinstated and allowed private sector access to prison labor again, but only if prevailing wages were paid. Now, the exceptions to that became agriculture, services, which continued to use prison labor, and then naturally, a lot of states, including New York, shifted the use of prison labor from leasing to private businesses to using that to pad its own state or supported state budgets, which was not covered under that federal law. So since, I think there's been a lot of examples of the type of work that people in core craft do, but importantly, it subsidizes the state budget in two ways. One, it generates revenue for the, for docs, essentially obscuring or offsetting some of the agency's actual costs of incarceration in our state. And secondly, it subsidizes state agencies who would otherwise have to and often would like to go to the public market for goods and services. So jumping forward, I think it's important to note that these jobs that pay people, as we know, just a few pennies an hour, create a tremendous amount of value for the state off the backs of incarcerated workers, families and children, crime victims, and taxpayers. So despite generating millions in revenue for the state, they cannot afford basic communication and commissary costs. Working full-time, they cannot send money home to support their children or families. There are families who actually end up carrying most of the cost of incarceration. In New York State, twenty million alone is spent by families on just phone calls to stay in touch with loved ones who are incarcerated. And ask yourself this question: at ten cents an hour, at sixty cents an hour, how does one who's incarcerated pay back restitution to their crime victims? Right? At the end of the day, they are also losing, not being paid for years, if not decades. And so it asks, begs this question, right? Stealing wages from people who are incarcerated steals wages from who? Right? Not just the people who are incarcerated, but in fact, all of us. So wrapping up, the, there was a recent study that was published by leading economists in DC, Edgeworth Economics, that evaluated the costs and benefits of paying incarcerated workers fair wages. And the authors identified that there are a multitude of these benefits, and a lot of them actually accrue to taxpayers. Increased tax payments, both during incarceration and post-incarceration, improved employment opportunities and earning potential upon release, and reduced incarceration and crime costs from reduced recidivism when people come home. In fact, paying people real wages would give you a tenfold return over what core craft currently makes. Right? So closing, just want to name that I think going back to those federal laws that currently bar private sector from using the labor of people inside without paying prevailing wages, we as a state should not allow the state government to do that, to circumvent and to provide sort of residence both inside and outside of prisons in our state with less rights than the federal government would otherwise give them if it was the private sector moving further. I would just urge the legislature here in New York to pass the state constitutional amendment prohibiting slavery from being used as criminal punishment, as was noted that many states have done recently, to pass the bill package put forward by Thirteen Forward that would establish fair wages and labor protections for incarcerated people, and finally, to also pass the Connecting Families Act, which would make all communication in prisons free.
Okay, that was a whirlwind. Thank all of you for your testimony. Our first questions will come from Senator Salazar.
Thank you, Senator Soufis. And I think my first question for Bianca, but relevant to Sumit's testimony, so Sumit, in your, in your written testimony, you mentioned that we policymakers would benefit from a cost-benefit analysis, or at least an in-depth analysis of the costs associated with, you know, running core crafts programs. And Bianca, my understanding is that Worth Rises actually released a report detailing a cost-benefit analysis of paying incarcerated workers fair wages instead of, you know, what some would consider slave wages. Can you share some of the findings of that with us?
Absolutely, thank you. So the report was done actually by, it was an independent report that we had commissioned from, as I mentioned, these, this DC-based leading economics firm called Edgeworth Economics. They basically took the abolition amendment, as we have seen in it for the federal legislation, right, to end the exception in Thirteenth Amendment, and said, if we end slavery in practice, what does that truly mean? And they started with the basic assumption that we would pay people fair wages, and that would be one of the steps that actually get us away from slavery. In doing so, they evaluated the costs, which in this case were largely the cost of increased payroll, assuming that jobs inside, which are facility and operations jobs, not the core craft jobs we're talking about today, but would be paid minimum wage, and then correctional industries jobs like core craft, public works jobs, and private sector jobs would be paid at prevailing wage. Interestingly enough, they also sort of made a conclusion that if we were to move to this model, there would actually be more private sector jobs available because with fair wages and labor protections, the taboo of employing people who are incarcerated could potentially go away, right? And that would be the intention, and so we could actually encourage folks to take jobs with, a lot of folks are to bring, companies to bring jobs inside, if we can establish that as a first basis, not before we actually establish those labor protections. In those costs, it's both the cost of wages and then the cost of payroll. Those are the major costs. On the benefit side, it was, I mean, I say endless, there was so many benefits that were accruing to incarcerated people, to families and children, think child support payments, things of that sort, to crime victims, as we talked about, restitution payments, to taxpayers in the form of additional tax payments, right, from increased wages and all these other things. And those, and they also noted that there was a lot of benefits that couldn't even be measured because there isn't, either isn't an economic data to do it, or, you know, the, the economics is still sort of evolving, right? Generational impact of economic mobility, for example. That said, and I want to be very clear because I know we are talking about core craft, what the analysis found for New York State at large, meaning that if all jobs within prisons were paid fair wages, again, facility and operations jobs at minimum wage, and correctional industries and other jobs paid at prevailing wage, that the net benefit after paying people incarcerate, you know, fair wages, was over six hundred million dollars. Right? And that doesn't even include the resale value of core craft. So like, the sixty million would be on top of that. That would literally just be the economic impact of, to all these bodies of paying fair wages.
Thank you. And I have a question for Jody about your testimony. You mentioned that during the time that, I guess I would say you were assigned to a core craft program because my understanding is you didn't really want to be doing the job. But during that time, you were enrolled in Cornell's Prison Education Program, and at times, the work in industry, it negatively impacted your, your education. Can you talk a little bit more about that? Obviously, this is, I think it's obvious that it's counterintuitive when we know that higher education in prison reduces recidivism, has so many benefits for incarcerated individuals and for all of us.
No, I appreciate that, Senator Salazar. The, I'll first begin with the process of getting involved in, in core craft, this program committee. So you go through intake, and then you're required to go through a number of different programs based on the facility's analysis of you. But when it comes to employment, you are assigned, right, quote-unquote, to work in a specific location. That has nothing to do with your, with your skill set, what you want to pursue, et cetera. It's the facility needs. And we know that core craft is an industry, right, and so there, there are needs there, and you are assigned, right? The moment you refuse to take on that assignment, there are a host of, and a partner here just listed them, of repercussions that you're going to suffer, right? And so, sure, you can refuse, right? Then we all know what comes with refusing, and the same way you could refuse to work under like, the conditions of chattel slavery, and there are also conditions, so a bit of a paradox there. Once you enter core craft, you're slated to work seven to eight hours, et cetera. And then during, that's during the day, so seven until it's like, four, et cetera. Programming that's happening in the educational building, you are, you are discouraged from pursuing that, right? And so, with Cornell's Prison Education Program, they had some program during the daytime that we weren't allowed to go to, like if you're in industry. And the only way you can, you know, get over there is if you have someone cover for you, right? Or talk to one of the guards, and it's basically a negotiation, right, to get out there. But there's no consistency in that, right? So it's all based on the whims of whoever is in the shop that day, which, which isn't an ideal way to pursue your education. So there are a number of classes that I had to forego during the daytime, I could only take courses at night. There is no path to, like, educate yourself within like, core craft. The training, some of the certifications that I heard about earlier, those are novel to me. I still don't have a certification, right, for all the work that I've done. I've seen education as a, as a pathway out, but you're actively prevented from pursuing that.
Thank you. Really appreciate you sharing your experience.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. I'll turn it over to Senator Myrie.
Thank you, Senator Soufis, and thank you to the panel. Thank you for your patience. We'll stay with you, Mr. Anderson. Something you said struck me pretty deeply when you said they value labor over learning. And you just went into some of that. I just, I'm hoping you can put a finer point on the situation where an incarcerated individual who desires to improve themselves by way of education, to acquire the soft skills that we heard frequently from the previous panel, can you talk about what the conflict is between that and the core craft requirements that you've experienced?
Absolutely. Besides the, the time blocks, right, so there's like conflicts of time because you're there during the day, you are, once you, once you make it known that you want to pursue higher education, there is just like, like backlash reaction from the facility at large, right? And so, there's a process where you have to like, get on a call out, or sign up for something, et cetera, they have to clear the count. There's all these other like, policies that make it very difficult for you to get out of the building, right? So it's hard to get out the building, right? And even though there isn't a formal policy that says, oh, you can't attend school, like functionally, it is hard to just get out the building because you need passes and escorts, and if there's not enough staff, which there conveniently never are during the time where you're supposed to go to the school building, you can't go. If you miss the, the time limit to go, then you're not allowed to proceed. And so those things hinder your ability to, like, actually pursue an education, to actually get those marketable skills to enter the labor force at that, at that, at that rate. The training that happens inside of core craft, non, is like, nonexistent, right? So there is no studying inside there, right? And once, once people like, see that, then they feel that your, your attention and your focus is on something else other than the work you're supposed to be doing, right? The thing with, like, going to core craft, that is how individuals not only like, pay for food and pay for other goods, but that's how you take showers, right? Like, getting a shower is guaranteed if you go and work at core craft, right? And so there, there are a host of other like, privileges that are withheld from you if you have other pursuits outside of dedicating your time to work in the facility. The instance, the reference to bonuses, right, that's like overtime. Like, you're working in that basement for more than seven or eight hours, right, to hit this like, bonus, right? And whatever is required by the floorman, et cetera, like, you are, you are required to do that, whether you have the requisite skill level or not. But other pursuits are seen as being in direct conflict with, with the ambitions of the facility and core craft initiatives, which is unfortunate.
Thank you for, for that testimony. And even if you are devoid of emotion and ignore how reminiscent this, this is of the darkest days in our country's history, where we didn't even want to teach people to read because of what the implications would be, just looking at this from a purely economic standpoint, and Megan, I know you shared some test, I actually read through testimony, you didn't get to speak about this specifically, we've been talking around it, and mindful that I have a minute and thirty seconds left, the cost of commissary that has risen over the, you know, let's, let's take nineteen ninety-three as the point of origin, the last time wages were raised. The cost of commissary has risen, just like the cost of everything else has, and I'm wondering if you can speak to what impact that has, and this is for the whole panel, on the families that have to support people being alive inside.
I'm, I'm happy to speak to it a bit, and Bianca, I think this is your lane, but to put an even finer point on that, a jar of peanut butter has risen seventy-one percent, right? And so, when doing the calculation of how long someone would have to work just to get a jar of peanut butter, which I don't know if, if everyone has done prison visits, but if you have and you see what people are eating, you understand that commissary isn't a privilege, it's a necessity in order to be able to feed yourself and nourish your body. And so, when you have to work forty, fifty hours to feed yourself, that is outrageous. We, we are, we are putting people in a position where incarcerated people have higher rates of chronic illness, they have higher rates of, of comorbidity, and we are creating that situation by, by a level of exploitation that is unheard of. And I know you can speak to the economics of that.
Yeah, thank you. So absolutely. Imagine having to work five hours to make a fifteen-minute phone call. Like, if you actually start to compare, right, costs, and so a lot of times people will say, well, the cost of this peanut butter may or may not be like, higher inside than it is outside, but your, your wage cost is completely different, right? At nine cents or ten cents an hour, having to work multiple hours to simply afford toothpaste, soap, shampoo, these are not love.
to simply afford toothpaste, soap, shampoo, these are not luxuries. People are not going to commissary in order to afford luxuries. They're going to commissary to actually have a basic dignified life behind bars, right? And have access to the same things that you and I have access to in our bathroom, right? To have access to quality food. And I want to say, in addition to the increase in commissary costs, recently, you know, docs has implemented new package programs that prevent families from being able to send in, you know, home goods, right? And having to, like, requiring them to send those from private vendors, which again, increases the cost and doesn't allow them to supplement that with the types of things that they would have access to. As I mentioned earlier, we're talking about over $20 million that New York families are spending just to communicate, right? Because when you do have to work five hours to make a simple 15-minute phone call, it is not you that ends up paying for that, right? It is your loved ones to the extent that they have it. One in three families in our country goes into debt over the simple cost of trying to stay in touch with an incarcerated loved one. And so, those costs are very real, and taking that away is like, really significant. And I just want to add one other like, quick thing. As we think of this like, comparison between educational programs and jobs, right? And I hate sort of calling them vocational programs. These are not apprenticeships. You don't learn to do something for 20 years. You just don't, right? You don't need 20 years to figure out how to make a license plate. That is not an apprenticeship. That is not something that you are teaching people that they can take when they come out because in New York, every single license plate is made in a New York prison. So what are you teaching, right? The end of the day, this is real labor with, they are real jobs that people are just not getting paid for.
Thank you.
Senator Myrie, thanks to all of you for your testimony, truly. I want to start with Megan. I want to make sure that I heard your opening testimony accurately. Did you say that in the past three years, Kings County, the most populous county in New York State, if I'm not mistaken, only spent $225 towards CoreCraft goods?
That is correct, and it's because it's the best county.
So putting aside all of our feelings, and I think I, most of us have deep concerns over CoreCraft, elements of CoreCraft, the preferred source nature of CoreCraft. Putting that aside, I can't help but sit here, and when I hear that, there is no way that Kings County is following the preferred source law if they're only spending $225. Is that, do you agree? Is that a fair statement?
I think that may be fair. I am not an economist. I have played one in other jobs. But I will say that if you look at some of the city agencies that operate in Kings County, those numbers look startlingly different, right? So like, the NYPD, for example, is spending over $2 million with CoreCraft, largely on furniture, probably the same furniture y'all have in your offices. There are other city agencies that are totaling in the millions or the hundred thousands in a three-year period. And I want to be clear that, as you know how foils work, especially foils to docs, there, it's a timely process. So this was 2017 through the end of 2020.
And I just raised that point to, I think, illuminate something here, which is that some municipalities that follow the law as it's written, whether we like it or not, they are prevented from engaging in a free market when it comes to purchasing these kinds of supplies and equipment, et cetera. But there are many others who, I guess because there's no enforcement whatsoever, not casting judgment on whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, but because there's no enforcement, in fact, the docs commissioner admitted there's no enforcement.
That's right.
They are participating in a free market for all these supplies. And I think that it's important that we have one set of rules that everyone's following, that hopefully are rules that are reflective of what we're all trying to get at here, right? Let me ask, if I can change gears a little bit here, Bianca. You had mentioned there's some federal statute that restricts private companies being able to utilize workforce within prisons unless they pay prevailing wage. Is that just for federal facilities, or is that all prisons?
No, that's all prisons. It's the PI program, so the Private Industry Enhancement Certification Program. That was passed in 1979. It dictates the way, because of, you know, federalism, it governs any product that makes its way into interstate commerce. So that's how it basically impacts everything. Anything that stays within a state, as many, you know, as docs selling something to New York City Public Schools. Exactly. Doesn't fit the bill of quote-unquote interstate commerce, though many audits of supply chains have suggested some of these things do make their way out.
Okay. Is it your opinion that if prevailing wage, or at least minimum wage, is paid for the work, that private companies should be allowed, encouraged to be utilizing an incarcerated workforce in New York?
It's my opinion that the first thing we have to do is ensure that the exception clause of the 13th Amendment and slavery cannot be used as criminal punishment. That the second thing we have to do is establish real labor protections, which includes fair wages, but also other labor protections, not simply fair wages. And that once we do all of those, I think we can absolutely have a conversation about who the employers can be.
Are there, and this is for anybody, but it sounds like perhaps, Bianca, you have the most non-New York experience or lens here at the table. Is there a state that gets this right? Is there a model state that you would encourage us to look at when it comes to an incarcerated workforce? And importantly, you know, supplies to government offices?
I'll just say, no, unfortunately. The reality is, is that this exception exists around the country. We are grateful, and I think it is exciting to see that seven states have recently passed state constitutional amendments to amend, you know, and ensure that they don't have slavery on the books. That doesn't mean they've all fallen into practice. There are lawsuits in those states that are now starting to demand that as a right. Because you could put something in paper, and unless you demand it as a right, it doesn't happen. So those things are moving. It's a slow-moving, you know, path. But there's nobody that, currently today, there's still nobody who's paying prevailing wages for, you know, all work in their correctional industries. I think Colorado's moving towards that, but still has a long ways to go. The majority of states are paying zero, so even less than New York, to, you know, a few cents an hour, or a dollar an hour, but we're still talking very, very low. So there's certainly nothing for us to be looking at as a model on this.
Okay. And just one last question, because I know my time is up, and I'm not above the time restrictions here. And this could be a raise-your-hand response, sort of a two-part question. Raise your hand if you believe that CoreCraft needs to be blown up. And then if not, the second round of raising hands will be, CoreCraft, conceptually, the framework could work if there are significant changes. But if you think that there is no saving CoreCraft, and it needs to be blown up and done away with completely, raise your hand. Okay? So like, three hard yeses and two like, maybes. Okay.
And I think I want to qualify that. Like, there's a lot of things that needs to be blown up. But yeah, there's a maybe. I think the maybe is, is that like, people who are incarcerated want to be able to make choices about how they spend their time, which includes both being able to go to educational programs, and that needs to be, you know, respected and supported. And also, some people want to work, right? People want to be able to provide for their families outside if they can. They want to be able to at least provide for themselves, not be a burden to their families financially. So I think, you know, our position is that it's not to obliterate work and the opportunities for people to work, but absolutely what we have is abusive and exploitative.
And I would just add to that, but I think we've found that when we're tinkering at the edges of something that's been wholly exploitative, that revisions and amendments to that do not work. And that's why I say, I firmly agree that we want people to have the right to work, but we don't want to work with a system that's been wholly exploitative. We want a new one.
So to add some context, I mean, the reason we bring up the amount of people with other job assignments, 14,000 people, is to say that CoreCraft aren't the only jobs available in prison. There are people working as porters, working in like, a variety of different positions. And to say that there's like, 6,000 people in education programs, 3,000 people in vocational programs, who also receive like, a weight, or like, a base wage, or a base rate, which is to, right, the recommendation around increasing wages for people in prison, regardless of whether or not they're participating in a CoreCraft program. And to the point around, right, where there was someone we spoke with at Aldean who was appreciating, I guess, having the chance to take on learning how to be a welder, which is a well-paying job apparently, upon release. But so, I just wanted to qualify the nuances around raising the hand over there.
Understood.
Because there's been some conversation about whether or not incarcerated workers are actually forced to work, whether or not they have a choice to work. And I think there's a lot of evidence that they do not have a choice, but even if we assume that there are choices, I think it's pretty clear that all of the choices are inhumane. So that's not really a choice, right?
It's coercion.
And so, each of us on the panel, we have jobs, we work. We have a system in this country for paying people for their labor, for making sure that there are labor protections for those folks, for making sure of all sorts of things. So I think the first question has to be, why is it that this set of people doesn't get access to the system that already exists? And if we can't answer that question in a way that feels moral to us, then we simply shouldn't do it. And it seems to me that a primary lesson of this nation's history with slavery is that we must insist that all people are people in exactly the same way. Why are incarcerated workers any different than the five of us and what we get when we go to work?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you very much all for your time, and your testimony was very helpful. Have a great rest of the day. The next panel will be, it looks like, three groups. A Little Piece of Light, The Fortune Society, and Citizen Share Brooklyn. Okay, I'll say, there are two of you here from The Fortune Society, is that right? Which two? The bookends?
And Joseph Soto.
Okay, is one of you doing remarks?
Both.
You're both doing remarks, okay. I just ask again, try and be mindful of time, and we'll work, I guess, this way, again, if that works. Introduce yourself, and thank you for being here.
Hello, my name is Joseph Soto. Good morning, Chair, Sufis, and members of the Senate Standing Committee on Investigation and Government Operations, Chair Salazar, Senator Myrie, and other members of the Senate Standing Committee on Crime Victims, Crimes, and Corrections. And Chair Cooney, who's not here, members of the Senate Standing Committee on Procurement and Contracts. I appreciate the opportunity to share my experiences and insights regarding the New York State Department of Corrections and Community Supervision, the vision of correctional institutions commonly known as CoreCraft, or as the industry. My name is Joseph Soto, but I am currently serving as a care management liaison and community health worker for The Fortune Society and the Health Justice Network. I am also a violence interrupter in Kings County Hospital. I spent 25 years incarcerated and returned to society in 2019. For most of my period of incarceration, I worked as a trilingual interpreter in the law libraries. I can communicate in English, Spanish, and American Sign Language, which I learned in prison. However, I faced retribution when my success in helping others file complaints against docs, staff, became apparent. When I was transferred from prison to prison instead of continuing in the law library, I was often moved to work in CoreCraft instead. As a result, I worked intermittently in various CoreCraft industries across multiple prisons, including the garment industry in Clinton and Kansaki, making license plates in Auburn, and manufacturing soap and gray metals. My initial wages at CoreCraft began at a mere 28 cents per hour. After 12 to 18 months, I earned only 38 cents per hour. With no family support, thank you, like many others, I found my wages inadequate. So I resorted to breaking the rules by selling handmade craft, like postcards, stuffed animals, or making bacon muffins. I used my CoreCraft wages to purchase items that had to be ordered. I used illegal obtained funds to purchase food, like canned tuna, chicken, or supplement my inadequate prison meals. For example, I saved CoreCraft wages for months just to be able to purchase a pair of cheap sneakers. I also set aside funds to order cheesecakes for my family during the holidays so they can have a piece of meat while they're having their meal. I could not afford to also send them presents, but to purchase stamps and food, I used up proceeds from illegal activities. For example, I baked muffins. I sold them for one stamp of muffin. When I sell 20 stamps for $25, and use the $5 to purchase food for myself from commissary. People who work for CoreCraft do not have any other legal source of income. Learn quickly to participate in the illegal underground economy in prison. This is not what we should be teaching our people. Preparation for successful reentry must begin while people are incarcerated. Essentially, forcing them to commit illegal acts presents a significant challenge for those striving to take straight and narrow path upon release. In addition, facing challenges access sick call when needed due to the rigid procedures in place. To work, the work environment was not conducive to well-being because people routinely had to decide between working while sick or risking disciplinary action. You could not get excessive work, you cannot be excused from work without a doctor's note. You cannot obtain a doctor's note without going to sick call. But you could not get to sick call without missing work. It's a catch-22. Also, you did not get paid if you missed work due to illness, even if you did have a doctor's note. As a result, I often worked when sick, even if sick was something serious like the flu. We tried our best to avoid each other because it was easy to spread illness in a cram shop. Considering these experiences, I would like to commend the committees for their attention to these critical issues. I would also like to draw attention to the 13th Forward Campaign, particularly the No Slavery Act as a step in the right direction. The campaign aligns with the needs to address the exploitation conditions within CoreCraft and presents an opportunity to rectify issues created by its operations. The focus on fair compensation, improved working conditions, ethical standards is critical to the well-being of incarcerated individuals and the overall effectiveness of our correctional system. By considering this bill's provisions, we can move towards a system that is more equitable, just, supportive of individuals seeking positive reentry experiences. In conclusion, my personal experiences underscore the urgency of addressing these challenges within CoreCraft. I recommend that the committee continue to scrutinize CoreCraft's operations, ensuring fair wages, better working conditions, and policies that align with the principles of justice and rehabilitation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Roger Green. First time I've been sitting on this side of the table as opposed to up there. I used to serve as a member of this New York State Assembly for over 26 years. Served as chairperson of the Standing Committee on Children and Families and longest-serving chair of the New York State Black and Puerto Rican Asian Caucus, which I'm proud to have been in that capacity. I'm currently a co-founder of the organization entitled Citizen Share Brooklyn that has been involved in the process of trying to address the structural been involved in the process of trying to address the structural, racial, and economic inequality that exists in certain neighborhoods that contributes to mass incarceration. And we, our mission is to address that by helping to build out new enterprises that offer opportunities for folks in our community to secure not only a living wage, but also generational wealth by way of profit sharing or equity. I might add that the organization that I co-founded was, it came about as a resolution of fourteen elected officials who worked with us as I was serving as a MIT fellow. We took a cohort of elected officials to MIT, as well as overseas, to see different types of economic enterprises that could address these contradictions that we were trying to deal with in central Brooklyn. And by way of doing that, one of the areas that we had determined that we wanted to focus on was the creation of a furniture manufacturing company in collaboration with the Mondragon Cooperative Federation in Spain. So we took fourteen elected officials to Spain as well. Some, many of the folks who served here in the state legislature came back and they resolved, okay, let's do this. But there was one problem. There was a state monopoly entitled Core Craft that purchases, manufactures furniture, and has depressed the labor market as well as prohibiting healthy competition for other enterprises who want to get into that particular sector. And as we began to look at this problem, at that time, I was serving as senior fellow at Cuny Law, working with the Community Economic Development Clinic. And we pulled together a cohort of students to begin to look at both the history of core craft and also what kind of alternative systems we might be able to create. So coming out of that experience, I can't be, I and several others joined the Thirteenth Forward Movement to end carceral labor, which is an extension of racial capitalism and convict labor and the chattel slavery system. We hope that the state legislature will pass that particular legislation and move it towards a vote with the, as part of a statewide referendum. We hope that will happen. But in the meantime, we also think that there's need to, while that process is going on, there's also a need to create a proof of concept. We suggest that it should be organized around furniture manufacturing to look at an alternative way of doing business, which you said, should we blow it up or, you know, do something different? Well, I think the issue is progressive transformation, period. Understanding the realities of the legislative process, having served here for twenty-six years, you can approach things with a radical imagination, but you have to be realistic about how we're going to get to a conclusion, and it definitely will be incremental. That's the reality. And I say that as someone who identifies himself as progressive. So what I think is that we need a proof of concept. And one of the things that the first thing we need to look at is definitely increasing the wage. But I also think that one of the things we need is to look at it in the context of a family preservation policy also, that the first population that we might want to look at as part of a proof of concept are those who are part of the incarcerated population who have children. Before I left office, I regret that one of the last things we were not able to do, we created a comprehensive family preservation initiative for the state of New York using TANF resources and worked with Senators Allen in doing that. But one of the areas that we didn't focus on, and I would suggest this is something that your committee should look at, Senator Salazar, is the relationship between incarceration and the unknown victims with your children, you know? If in fact, we can create a serious, let's say, career technology education program linked to furniture manufacturing, ensuring that in that population, as part of apprenticeship training, of folks who are securing a real living wage, knowing that those resources will also contribute to the material and emotional well-being of their children. And can also also be contributing to the concept of restorative justice, particularly as it relates to victims of the crimes that were committed. You know, I think that's a logical approach in terms of a first step. Then I also think we need long-term longitudinal study, your committee, focusing, looking at the whole concept of what are we saying in terms of a real cost-benefit analysis? You know, I keep hearing this term that, you know, the commissioners came and said that, you know, this isn't, you know, it's good for the state, but I don't think we've had a serious, serious analysis, quantitative and qualitative analysis as it relates to the long-term alternatives that could be achieved, and that's why we need a proof of Comparison contrast between what we would propose as, in comparison to what currently exists. On the issue of how much Kings County purchases from core craft, well, I don't know about that because my organization did a procurement analysis and just from Downstate alone, when we approached the procurement offices at Downstate, they said they purchased all of their furniture from core craft, all of their furniture, you know, which, you know, the Department of City Administrative Services, Mondragon could not initiate a contract with the Department of City Administrative Services because they purchased all of their furniture from core craft, you know? So I think this also has to be looked at in the context of how, well, before core craft, which is a state monopoly, got in motion in terms of manufacturing furniture, New York City and other parts of the state had a viable furniture manufacturing sector. Core craft, cursory analysis suggests core craft drove them out of the state into right-to-work-for-less states and now into the global south in pursuit of cheaper labor. And so I think that when you look at that and you look at the relationship between the disinvestment that has occurred in urban centers that has contributed to the increase in crime, which then increases mass incarceration, we need to look at that when we start talking about the concept of a cost-benefit analysis, you know? This whole concept of death by despair is nothing new in the African-American, Latino communities. The absence of jobs, you know, Julius Wilson's book, When Work Disappears, clearly demonstrated that there's a relationship between the absence of employment in these communities and jobs. Finally, what I would say is this, that if the governor is going to do a jails-to-jobs initiative, it has to be linked to a formal articulation agreement within core craft so that the folks that come out of the system, you know, come out with appropriate certificate of mastery so that they can get employment and the legitimate economy. And that means that there has to be investments within the correctional system for real education and employment training opportunities. And finally, I would say is this, that this concept of prison industrial complex is nothing new. When I was chairing the caucus, we actually commissioned the late Dr. John Flato at Mega Evans College to write a book, which was called The Prison Industrial Complex, that looked at the contradictions that existed within the system, including the failures of core craft. And so I would hope that, and first I want to thank you for having the insight, the vision to pull this hearing together, building on this body of knowledge, and then hopefully making sure that it's articulated in legislation that would be introduced to the body, the legislative body. And again, I've been working with a cohort of students. They have come up, have formulated legislation that we'd like to present to you, to view as you proceed with your, with your good work. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Green, and it's great to meet you. And through Senator Myrie, I know you've done a lot of work on the core craft issue when you were here in the legislature. To the last two folks, don't let the clocks fool you, you don't have ninety-two minutes. And I ask that you please be as brief as you can, but thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Donna Hilton. I am the president and CEO of A Little Piece of Light. That's an organization I founded to focus on and to deal with the trauma, the trauma of the criminal legal system and also other systems that represent trauma. And we focus on women, young women, gender-fluid individuals, and LGBTQ individuals as well within the community. I'm here today to testify, and I know that you have testimony of mine in front of you, but I'm a veer off because I heard a lot of things today. And again, I said my name is Dr. Donna Hilton, but for today, I'm going to be inmate eighty-six G zero-two-zero-six, and I need to be after what we've heard today. And they are not in the room, they always leave after they testify and leave with lies and that we have to, we have to correct. And so let's do some corrections for the Department of Corrections. First of all, for the twenty-seven years I was in the criminal legal system in New York State, vast majority of that I was on the inmate liaison committee in numerous roles. One role I want to specify right now, be specific on, I was the treasurer at one time. When I was the treasurer on the ILC, we are given certain documentations that we look over and so we know the runnings and the ins and outs, inmate benefit funds and core craft, you know, the system that is not just predatory but cannibalistic in its theory, nature, and practice. And what I found being treasurer at that period was a vast amount of money that was missing from the inmate benefit fund to benefit the officer's benefit fund, basically, because I can't remember the name of that, right? But we are talking about how core craft makes anywhere from fifty to fifty-eight, sixty million dollars a year, and the revenue from that is like forty-eight, fifty million dollars a year. But we heard earlier that the monies go back into the industry of core craft, but we heard that people like myself were only making sixty-five cents an hour, sixty-five cents an hour. When I was approached, before I left Bedford Hills Correctional Facility, to be, because I was a role model within the system, and so I was chosen as one of the first to open the DMV program in Bedford Hills, the Department of Motor Vehicles. I was not orientated to the DMV program in the way that you would think when you're out here and you get the probationary period. We had to learn it like that. First of all, I was chosen, in other words, it was mandatory that I accepted that position as a representative, and I don't even know the term for it now, for the DMV program. And if I didn't, I was on the honor unit. I would have lost the honor unit. I had a twenty-five to life sentence. First of all, there isn't basically no good time for a lot of people within the system in New York State. So the six months off that you heard is dependent on a lot of things, a lot of things. And so I was one of the first women in Bedford Hills Correctional, I was actually the first woman in Bedford Hills Correctional Facility, to be, when I went to the board, to be presented with that six months off. That six months meant that I, before, that I was able to go to the board six months before my actual parole hearing date. So again, if I was to go to the board in June, then that means I would go into the board in December prior, right? Now, it came with, that, that opportunity came with a lot, like a carrot dangling over, you know, in front of my face. I would lose the honor unit, I would not go to the board six months ahead of time, I would then lose visits, if those of us had any, I would lose phone calls, I would lose a whole lot of things, and then the threat of solitary confinement was one of them. We are threatened with solitary confinement if we refuse a lot of things. I did not go to my counselor and go through a process where I was choosing my job or any, I was told what to do. That in itself is forced labor. I was awakened at two o'clock in the morning, at one period in time, told that I had to get up and shovel snow. I was the chaplain's aide. I was not on a work detail. And so I questioned that. Why am I being awakened at two o'clock in the morning to be told to go shovel snow when that's not my job? Well, if you don't, you know it will happen, and I just gave you some examples of what would happen. And so of course, we're going to do what is presented to us because we have no other choice. All that is forced, all of it is forced. I heard, you know, the monies being thrown around, and again, that great chunk of money when I was on the ILC that was taken out of the inmate benefit fund to benefit other funds that had nothing to do with the inmate population, and I was told by the deputy superintendent of programs that if I raised it again, I would be sent to solitary confinement and I would lose every privilege, that is not a privilege for anyone else in the free world, but I would lose every privilege that there was. So I didn't say anything, but you know what did happen? I was made a tracker. So every, that means that everywhere I walked and went in the facility, I was tracked, a phone call was made because they wanted to keep an eye on me because I questioned how such a great chunk of money was taken from us and placed somewhere else and could not be found. So those are things that we're faced with, and I say it in this way because I heard it was said in a way where there are no consequences or repercussions if we question things or if we say, no, we don't want to do it. I was locked, pre-hearing confined at one point because I could not go to work. I woke up and the world was spinning, I just wanted to get off of it, found out that I had high blood pressure throughout my, you know, at some point I had vertigo, but I was not given the opportunity to go to medical, I was not able to go anywhere, I couldn't do anything, but I was locked. That's the consequences that happen. Those are the things that happen. I want to set the record straight because those lies that are always told are never corrected, never corrected. And I challenge, and I want to challenge that today because we need to pass Thirteenth Forward. Slavery should never exist in 2024 anywhere, but definitely not in New York State. We still have convict leasing going on, to my colleague's point, Bianca. We still have it going on when we have entities such as Core Craft, who is cannibalistic in nature, feeding off of those of us that are incarcerated to make, to make revenue for you of fifty million dollars a year, and you're telling me that I'm only getting sixty-five cents?
Hey, it's a good time, and thank you for having me. Myrie, Senator Schoffler, and Senator Salazar. I appreciate this opportunity. I'm a representative of The Fortune Society. Right now, I'm a New York Reentry Task Force Coordinator, and my perspective comes from that of experience. I served twenty-three and a half years, went in when I was eighteen, came when I was forty-one. When I first initially got to Kansakee, it was, it was terrifying. Obviously, I couldn't say that. I went in as a young man who already was married, I had a wife, I had a daughter on her way, I had a poor education, I had a fourth-grade relay level, I got to Kansakee, and I earned my GED, you know? And when earning my GED, I realized that there was an opportunity to go to industry. Why? Because I wanted a lesson of earning for my child, for my wife, you know? And you want to know, Senator, though I come from a community where a lot of us fight each other, I never seen oppression, as it is in core craft, as it is in the each other, I never seen oppression as it is in CoreCraft, as it is in the state penitentiary, you know? When I got there, I was really happy, I said, you know, 16 cents is better, it, it, it beats a blank, you know? Beats every other program that's there, every other program, you're making 10 cents, 12 cents, the best you could possibly do is get a, a teacher's aid position where they pay you like 20 cents an hour or 18. So I said, let me go to CoreCraft, and what they do is that once I earned my GED, made me eligible to go take a training like they talking about here. That training was a little vocational area, they had to learn, I had to learn upholstery. I was there for like 15 days, and then they threw me into industry. They moved me from a housing unit to a separate housing unit. And while I was in that housing unit, then I started going into industry, and they determined, you know what, because you could use a sewing machine, which I barely just learned, you could be able to work in CoreCraft. So when I got to CoreCraft, they threw me on the machine. While I was working on the machine, inexperienced, trying to do the status quo that they talking about, you know, they meet the quota, the bonus, or this and that, if we don't meet the bonus, guess what? Not only the staff looks at us like we doing something wrong, but the people we work with are like, yo, you need to step your game up because if not, we not going to get our bonus. So that was the main fault, that was the carrot. We'll give you half of whatever you earn because you are, you know, going to get a little something because you get 100% bonus. But that 100% bonus means that it's going to get, you know, product out for them to make the money they need to make. This is what I'm thinking. I'm very young and naive. There was different parts of the unit in Cassaki, they had the sewing, they had the seal screening, they had the, the material cutting, they had the way where they made the underwears and under, undergarments for the women at Bedford and the facilities, they had a warehouse where they did the spectral chairs. That's when I first seen a spectral chair. And you know where I saw a spectral chair? To, last week, on Friday, I went to the precinct, and I saw a spectral chair there. I said, yo, Paige, yo, that's the chairs we made, those right there too. Those are all spectral chairs. So I was like, wow, you know? And I, and I wanted to do spectral chair because I know if I do spectral chairs, guess what? I get a pay increase, you know, I get a pay increase. So I was just trying to do better and do good and just align myself and do what I got to do because in my mind, my naive mind, I swear, I thought that if I made enough money with that little 16 cent, I could send something to my family, you know what I'm saying? And it's really hard to, to accept that, that now, you know, 2024, I come home, I see how life really is, like, I didn't get a glimpse of that in there. I didn't get a glimpse of that with the training. I got a lot of, like they say, pushback when I was trying to move forward, whether it be education or whatever. I was one of the youngest guys to get a supervisor position in the warehouse. And just to show the level of racism, another, not to say white is bad, you know, my best friend, my brother, he's white, you know what I'm saying? And, and a white guy came, and they said, he's older, he's more mature, let's have him have that role. And every, and when, and as soon as he came in, I remember his name, his name was Vinnie, and as soon as he came in, everything started chaotic for me. I'll be going to the metal detector, in and out, you got to go through a metal detector every time you go in, every time you leave, got to take off your shoe, take off your belt, you got to go through it. Every time, yo, hurry up, stop dragging your ass, or this, or that. All of a sudden, I became the asshole when I just did something minor or wrong. Um, to the point where they got me locked up. They didn't like the way you was performing, they made an excuse, and they wrote me up. Once they wrote me up, guess what? If it's not through that process of education where they say, you know, you have poor performance, but when they decide to say, you know what, you knew it a bad job, they don't like the way you work, you don't like the way you look, don't like the way you walking, we're going to write you a ticket. And if it sticks, it sticks, deal with it with decimals, decimals is where you go to get a hearing. So they gave me a ticket, and in Cassaki, if you get a ticket, guess what happens? They send you straight to Key Block. That means you go to a whole different unit, you got to carry all your bags, and if you don't have the ability to carry the bags you got, you got to leave what you have behind. So what ended up happening, they ended up agitating, pushing me, and you know, I'm young, I'm like, yo, stop it, bro, you know, leave me there for long, whatever the case may be, they ended up giving me a Key Block. I ended up losing the job, and guess who took the position? Vinnie, you know? Uh, but I'm getting hurt because I was a novice in sewing, and I, and I, and I, you know, I sewed my finger. I went up there, they said, oh, here's a band, they go to sick call, get a technical shot and come back, you know? And then when, let's say, for example, I had an opportunity to do overtime when I got to Clinton, right? I was doing coats, they had coats, pants, all that stuff there. And when I asked for overtime, the overtime is not time and a half, the overtime is whatever your grade is, and you get that. It's not like out here, you know, you work overtime, you get time and a half, but I still was, you know, focused in that mindset, like, you know, if I do good, I could save a little money, I could care for myself, and that's what I try to do. Why not with every single person who's in the industry or any single person who's doing something, something positive, why not some financial literacy class? Why not a bank account? Why not credit literacy? You know, like, as an incentive, we got to go through all these, you know, hoops, we got to go get a, you got to have a GED, right? You got to get along, you got to follow us. What about training for the staff? You got officers overseeing our work. They don't know nothing about industry, they just know about, you know what, correction, this is what it is. They don't get no training.
That's right.
They're telling us what to do, what not to do, and they're not professional. Like I told you, they were like, yo, you stop dragging your ass, hurry the fuck up, Rivera, what's wrong with you? Why you got to be a problem? And I'm over here like, yo, I'm trying to hold my sanity, you know, I'm serving a life sentence, I'm trying to get out. I, and that time when I came in, they didn't even have merit board.
That's right.
They don't have no good time for anybody who has a life sentence, you know? Whatever the case may be, the fact is that, while I was there, in retrospect to now, I realized there were so many things that they probably couldn't invest it into us and probably build our confidence and our ability to come back into the community more confident, more ready, as, as well as the staff. Everybody should be trying to evolve and grow, even the staff, even them that are sitting here. We don't have all the answers, but I know that what they was doing in there is an injustice. 16 cents, I know the process, 16, from 16 to, I think it was 25, from 25 to 32, from 32 to 35, from 35 to 42, from 42 to 45, and from 40, 45 to get to 65, you got to be there five years or better. So, you know, these are increment steps, but look at it in perspective. Today, I go eat in the corner store, I'm going to eat some rice, some beans, and that's $15, that's a week of work where industry paid. I appreciate you and I thank you, and I hope that, you know, I know you do, because I, I heard the conversation today, y'all was definitely on point, but these are other things that you have to always keep in mind, you know, if you present the idea to them and they take it into consideration. But there's a lot of stuff that I really appreciate for you for doing that, and the questions y'all did rise.
Good, thank you all very much. We'll go to questions now, starting with Senator Salazar.
Thank you. First of all, um, to the three of you on this panel who have experienced this firsthand, uh, I want to say, you know, I know that often when folks who are incarcerated or formerly incarcerated share their experiences of what they witnessed and, you know, what happened to you while incarcerated, um, there's gaslighting, you know what I mean by gaslighting? That people, you know, it's so difficult to prove these things because of inadequate oversight access to, you know, what's happening inside, and that's why we do hearings like this as well. But I just want to mention that to say that, um, I believe you. And, um, and particularly to Dr. Hilton, um, you know, you talked about your experience on the ILC, having funds essentially stolen from the ILC. It is so outrageous, perhaps unbelievable, but, um, you know, when you're, speaking about this in your testimony, it reminded me of, um, a few years ago when during an official visit to Attica, the ILC told me the same thing, and even provided documentation, both, um, their, their own documents, record keeping of their funds, um, as well as documentation from docs specifying how those funds were used, and they were used to pay utility bills. Um, and, and so it's like, it's unbelievable, but I know that it's real, and so I really just wanted to affirm that, and also note, in your written testimony, um, Dr. Hilton, you had mentioned, um, that you had heard from men who faced harrowing injuries in their, in their work for CoreCraft, um, were issued a disciplinary ticket for destruction of state property as they were themselves viewed as state property. That is, I think it goes without saying, deeply disturbing, um, in this context. So honestly, I don't, I don't have a question at this point, but, um, I, I just really appreciate all four of you for your, your testimony today, um, and, uh, I'll follow up, Mr. Green, um, with you about the legislative recommendations from your students.
Thank you. Senator Myrie?
Thank you, and, um, yeah, similar to Senator Salazar, I want to just thank you for your testimony today. I know that it's really difficult to talk about your past experience, your own experience, you've had to talk about this a lot. When I first got into the legislature, one of the first press conferences I held, I was standing with Mr. Rivera, um, on this very issue, and so I know that you've had to relive the trauma, as the doctor said. Uh, I want to thank Assemblyman Green, uh, for the work that you continue to do on this, and particularly pointing out the economic prosperity that we are forfeiting, uh, some might argue that we are snatching, um, from particular communities, having not done this in a, in a free market and more robust way. And to Mr. Soto, you know, you're doing intervention, public safety work right now, and I just wanted to, um, sort of summarize my takeaway from all of this, uh, on this panel, that society oftentimes views the incarcerated as deserving of whatever happens to you inside, uh, and I think we have to name that and address that and push back against that, uh, but it is a reality. I'm hoping that you, in your testimony and, um, in going forward, can highlight that it is actually a public safety imperative, uh, that we are rehabilitative, uh, that the Department of Corrections is doing correction, uh, inside and not punishment. Uh, if that's what it was for, we would call it the Department of Punishment, uh, but we are intending, uh, for those individuals who have caused harm, who have caused trauma on others, uh, to themselves be rehabilitated and come back, uh, into our communities to be better. So I want to thank you, uh, for continuing to uplift that principle, and that's certainly going to be a part of the conversation, uh, going forward.
Thank you, Senator Myrie, and, and to echo clearly for the three of you who, um, who have served time and are reliving and sharing your stories, it's, it's unthinkably painful, and so I, I deeply, and I think we all deeply appreciate trying to use your lived experience to try and make laws better here in New York State and, and fix the wrongs that are very apparent within our system. My question is, you know, we all heard the Docs Commissioner state very clearly that it's their policy that participation in the workforce is completely voluntary. You, 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 some of you have shared, and we've heard from some others as well, that explicitly challenge that claim. And so I guess my, my question to you is, if you're able to answer, what do you think that we should be doing as policymakers to actually make sure that that policy, that Docs, the Commissioner of Docs just sat here and, and shared not too long ago, actually translates into the facilities throughout the state? They're saying, this is our policy, it's not translating. What should we be putting in law? What should we be doing? What kind of over, how do you think we should be making sure it translates?
We need oversight, it needs oversight.
It, yeah, it has to have accountability. We had the same, um, and not to, to say it, we had the same, uh, ish situation with, um, the department, uh, you know, parole, appropriation, we just, there are no oversight. So people can do what they want to do on any given day, and that's what happens. And I want to bring this into this moment, saying that there is right now an initiative called the Work for Success Program that is with the Department of Labor and the Governor's Office, that those of us who have been inside and learned certain skills and got certified for it are supposedly able to bring that out and have that transferable out here to get a job. I, DMV would not hire me, I just thought I shared that because I didn't say that. DMV would not hire me. So I had jobs, and then I founded my own organization where I now employ people, right? Like me, because that's not true on its face. So it's not that. And to another colleague's point, um, when they said that education is the reason why, we put out a report from Bedford Hills, um, uh, some years back, it's the impact of college in a maximum security prison. It was the educational piece that brought us out and, and got us through, not the work piece of it, not the work piece of it. I mean, it could, can go hand in hand, but that was not the important thing, that was not for the, um, uh, specifics of, um, good time or whatever, those that can get that. It's the educational piece of it, which is very important, but we are threatened with that as well, to lose that. Take, take our educational, um, um, programming away if we don't do X, Y, and Z. So I had to make that very clear. Oversight needs to happen, and as soon as laws are passed, it takes a long time for it to even get inside. I've been a part of changing laws from I was inside, and the year that it was changed, the next year, or maybe two years after that, we're still fighting the shackling of, of pregnant women inside. Still shackling, and we passed that law twice. And so what I'm saying, it really needs some real strong oversight. You, you look it up on, on Google, you look up CoreCraft on Google, it has no governing body like any other industry, it has no board of directors, it has nothing. Why? Because it is docs, and that's why I call it cannibalistic in theory, nature, and practice, because it's eating off of the people that it has incarcerated to do the work, for it to make money, for it not to pay the people that are, are, you know, doing the work, for it to pay its staff and everything else.
There you go.
That's where the money is going.
Thank you.
I still have not found that $75,000.
Yeah.
And they said they would pay it back.
Yeah.
They have not paid it back to Bedford Hills Correctional Facility.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that, uh, in order to remake changes like this, 13 forward is one of the best, um, starting points.
That's right.
Right? Um, ending slavery completely, but also, when you look at slavery, you're looking at, you got the slaves and you got the masters, right? And if the slave says something, who's going to believe the slave over the master?
That's right.
That practice has to change because you got a lot of good people in there doing a lot of good work, but their words don't mean nothing when the master's speaking over them. CoreCraft is speaking over the whole industry. Nobody believes anybody that's working because they are insignificant. We are here today because we trying to listen, but CoreCraft is a powerful industry that, I'm sorry to say, but I don't really think anybody else in this room could really make a difference in CoreCraft because they're so powerful.
Yeah.
The masters are at work, trying to listen to the slaves and listen to what they got to say. Go inside there, listen to the slaves and hear what they got to say about what their conditions are really like, and you're going to find reasons why the 13 forward is very important.
That's right.
I wanted to say also, like, you asked, you know, how can they make note and reference to always that having a good impact in the individuals who are in, in industry? I heard them say that, you know, their, the skills that they learn in industry are transferable when they get out to the community, right? But there's really no note of that.
No.
So why not invest in helping an individual learning how to do a resume for themselves with the work that they're doing inside?
That's right.
Why not invest in some type of linkage to the community so they could start learning how to use their phones while they're incarcerated? I mean, everybody in there. There's so many things that you have to catch up to when you get released after 10, 20, 30 years incarcerated that you should have a head, you know, a step forward by the time you get out, and there should be a willingness from docs, from our communities, and everybody that has the power to do so, to make sure that these individuals are better prepared and better suited to use what they learn while they were incarcerated, when they're outside. They get a taper, taper says whatever, but they don't know how to write a resume.
Yeah.
They don't know how to attach a resume. I know because I work firsthand with the individuals that are coming home as a coordinator.
Yes.
You know, and I could see that there's an effort, but it has to be evident to the extent where individuals could come home with confidence knowing, you know what, I know how to use a phone, I know how to do a resume, I got a good resume, that what I did while I was in industry was worthwhile, because what I did in there, it does no evidence of it once I was released.
Yeah.
And it would have been helpful to have that.
Yes, thank you.
You know, the, um, what he's speaking to, um, I had a conversation with Dr. Lester Young, you know, Chancellor of the Regents, and he doesn't believe that's the case in CoreCraft, and, and feels as though there's a need, you know, for the state legislature to meet with the, um, state education department and corrections in an interdisciplinary approach to create the kind of standards that would enable folks to get, um, um, the competencies, you know, in terms of, you know, that they need once they, uh, reintegrated back into the community. And so I think this is a good time, particularly because of the leadership that you've demonstrated here today and continue to demonstrate, working with folks that are at, at this table, um, to, to really push that, you know? Yeah, folks need to work, you know, um, but they need
But they need also the skills that, so that they can survive once they get back into the community. And that's where I think the state legislature, working with SED, you know, creating programs like career technology education programs, where folks receive a certificate of mastery once they complete their, you know, their learning process, that's a different story, you know? But just pressing license plates, that's a whole nother thing.
Thanks to each of you again for, for your time. Really appreciate your testimony. Very briefly, please.
I was going to say that, let's say, for example, myself, I went in at 18, right? I couldn't see myself in community 23 years or whatever years from now. So if the system or Department of Corrections would present a realistic option of how they can connect to the community, I believe you would have a lot more success, a lot more safety in our communities because it allows them an opportunity to connect with the community that been moved away from. You have to create a picture. I was young, I didn't see 20 something. I didn't see that, I couldn't see, I just saw that moment. I needed some, I needed some money for commissary, I needed some money to send my daughter her birthday, you know? Imagine that, my daughter's birthday is past, she's 29 years old, so you tell me, you know? So if I have a visual, if I had somebody telling me, you know what, I believe in you and the system that supports that, then, you know, you will have a lot more success.
You know, I do got a certificate for core craft.
Last word. Last word.
And I'm going to keep it like this. I do got a certificate of core craft as a machine operator, but I couldn't get a job out here for nothing with that. But I keep it, just in case the world ends and I need toilet paper.
Thank you very much, everybody. We'll go to our last panel, which will be represented by RAP and Vocal New York. Okay, we could start with the, the other testimony, and you can join. What's your name, sir?
Jose Saldaña.
Okay. Is Jose Di Lanola joining us or no?
I didn't see him there.
Okay.
I saw the vocal guy.
And, and from? Okay, just Ron, okay. Why don't, why don't we start with you, sir? And the other panelists can join. Is that him? All right, we'll, we'll wait for him then. Because I'd like to administer the oath too while you're both here. Take your time. All right, you're rounding out our hearing here. Nice to see both you gentlemen. If you could, before we start, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, let's get started, please.
Can you hear me okay? All right. My name is Jose Saldaña, Director of the Release Aging People in Prison Campaign, RAP. We're a community organizing and advocacy group that seeks to end mass incarceration in New York State through the release of aging people in prison, those serving long prison sentences as a means of uprooting the legacy of racism that dominates the New York State criminal legal system. I am also formerly incarcerated. I was released from prison in 2018 after 38 years of incarceration. I also worked in industry during some of those years. I worked at Clinton Industry, Auburn, and Attica. And I'll tell you that what I heard today from DOCS commissioners, it's offensive, is what I heard from the governor of Florida. Core craft was not designed to rehabilitate. Core craft was not designed as a program, a training program to develop skills.
Can you pull the mic a little closer to you?
Core craft was not designed as a training program to develop skills. During my years of working in core craft, I mentioned that I'd worked in Attica, Attica Correctional Facility. No, I'll say, let's go Auburn. I'll just talk about Auburn. Of course, Senator Myrie, you mentioned about the metal plate factory in Auburn. Prior to my incarceration, I was trained by a program sponsored by the Department of Labor. It was called the Tool and Die Program. Trained how to reprint and just about make anything out of metal. So I worked in the plate shop. And those plates, licensed plates, I actually, when the die that produces, that stamps down those plates and gives that impression, when they get dull, I was the one that was called upon to sharpen them on a grinder. It's persistent work. When they break, I had to repair them, had to take them apart and repair the broken metal parts and put it back together and then test it for, for its tolerance so that it will actually work as it was designed to work. And the most I ever made was 42 cents. Not a dollar 30, 42 cents. I know men who have worked in core craft their entire sentence, 15 years, 20 years, 25 years, not six months, not three years. Their entire sentence for pennies. Their labor was measured in pennies. Pennies for the entire, you're talking about a lifetime. Imagine you working for an entire lifetime and your labor is measured in pennies. When we are released, all them years, the decades of labor do not count for unemployment benefits. Not a single day counts for unemployment benefits. So this is a, a view of the system that we're trying to address here. What value does really core craft really have? If it wasn't designed as a training program, it wasn't designed to help men and women become better human beings, wasn't designed to help us learn how to take responsibility, help us develop insight into the harm, help us embrace as moral obligation that we are commanded to repair harm. Doesn't do any of those things, then what value does it have?
Thank you very much. Please.
Good afternoon. I'm sorry I came late, I had to use the restroom. But my name is Ronald Dennis, I'm from Syracuse, New York. I'm informally incarcerated. I'm a part of RAP, I'm a part of Vocal New York. And I don't, I don't want to take up too much time because more or less, what I'm about to say, you've not heard it all day, right? But I will say this, right? When the commissioners were up here, that was a lot of crap. They fed y'all a lot of crap, man, you know what I mean? Because for one, I pressed license plates for like five and a half years. First of all, I did 36 years. And I pressed license plates for five and a half years. And the highest grade I, I went up to, because it's grades, grade one, two, three, four, to grade four, which is 42 cents an hour. Grade five is selected to two individuals for each shot. Right? So they will make like 65 cents. That would either be the clerk or the machinist that makes this 65 cent. Everybody else is 42 cents an hour. And that's a grade four pay. In order to get grade four pay, you have to work two years in the shop. They call that longevity. Right? Then the commissioner says they could take these skills home and use them. Name me one company in the United States, not just New York, but in the United States that press license plates. I'm 66 years old, I still have pain in my hands by putting them dies in the machines. I don't benefit from it. I don't get social security for it. Right? Here it is. If this job was out in the street, right? I would probably be making 18 to 20 dollars an hour. I worked five and a half years for 42 cents an hour. I, I really don't have too much more to say, man. Y'all didn't hurt it all, y'all know what to do. Y'all need to get that place up out of here.
Thank, thank you.
Just make it right, man.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. And to your point, a lot's been said, a lot's been asked, and a lot's been, at least on the surface, answered. And so I don't know how many questions we, we have since your panel number four here, but I do have one. And, and feel free, either of you can, can answer, or both. One of the things that we heard from the DOCS Commissioner was how there are 200-something staff, that civilian staff, that is on the rolls, the payroll of, of core craft. And the tens of millions of dollars that comes in, obviously, it's not going to, to, to pay for the incarcerated workforce, given the 20 cents, 50 cents, whatever it is. And it's, I think he made it pretty clear, it's by and large going to the civilian staff. And, and of course, you know, buying the supplies that are then used to, to build out all of the things that, that you build. And he, he noted one of the concerns that he had, or I think it might have been the deputy, was that if he did away with core craft, there'd be idle hands. I think that was, that was the term that he, he used. And that would cause lots of problems at each of these facilities that has a core craft program. That only suggests to me that there would be, you know, I guess what he was getting at, you can't get rid of core craft. I don't think anyone is suggesting that we address core craft in, in a vacuum here. And if something were to be pulled back, or even if core craft was eliminated, you know, one of the, you know, we have to work on what comes out of this hearing and what the next steps are. But even if you eliminate a core craft, I don't think anyone would suggest that there be a complete absence in programming in core craft's place. My question to you would be, assuming you, you, given your, your criticism of, of the program, assuming you, you want to see core craft either dramatically altered or, or eliminated, what would you like to see in its place?
I would like to see, as you said, core craft doesn't live in a vacuum.
You don't want to see idle hands, you want to see something in its place.
I wasn't idle. I mean, I worked in core craft for a few years out of 38 years. I certainly was not idle. You know, but we're talking about a system that feeds on itself. Core craft should be eliminated entirely and replaced as part of a system that begins with valuing the humanity of incarcerated people, the dignity of incarcerated people, and gives them the opportunity to retain that humanity. You know, so, you know, we're talking, we're not core, core craft is just one part of it. If we get away from perpetual punishment, perpetual family separation, the results, this is what the results are. I'm living proof of the results. He's living proof. A lot of us here are living proof of the result. And it wasn't core craft, it wasn't the Department of Corrections, it was our willingness to be better. So we created the programs that produce us. We are a part of the solution. So if we get away from defining justice as perpetual punishment that only produces intergenerational family separation, and we say, let us value human transformation first and foremost, put some value in that, that that is real, because we are real, and begin on a foundation that values humanity. Not only our humanity, but the, the people who suffer with us. You know, every, every formerly incarcerated person, and this is the results that I'm talking about, every one of us, when we ask, how you doing? You know, it was, it was rough the first year. But now I've been home three years, I'm doing pretty good. And my family is no longer, no longer living in perpetual poverty. That's the end result. We uplift our families out of perpetual poverty. And that is community safety. So we're talking about, let us commit to changing these, we have legislation that will produce these results. The No Slavery in New York Act, the Unemployment Bridge Program. We have these parole justices, we have the programs that have produced these results. If that's what we want.
You good?
No, I'm not really.
Do you want, I, I mean, do you want to respond?
Yeah, yeah, because, you know, let me ask you this, right? You see me here, right? I did 36 years in prison, okay? I came home in 2019. Took me three years to get off parole. And like the man said, we made that choice not to go back to prison. It wasn't nothing about rehabilitation, right? Although I do believe in habilitation, which means turning antisocial behavior into pro-social behavior, right? This is what I learned. But do I feel free out here? No, I don't. Right? I don't feel free because I'm on SSI and I, and I get food stamps. Why? Because I'm not eligible to get what? Social Security. Something that I earned. If I would have been able to work 10 years straight. But I'm too old now. So now I got to depend on the same people that kept me incarcerated for 36 years. Am I happy I'm out here? Sure. Am I happy to come up here and go to your office and go to your office to talk about parole justice? Yes. But I'm not free. I don't feel free. Until they make a change inside that prison system, perhaps I can feel a little free.
I want to thank both of you on behalf of the last three of us up here standing. Thank you for your testimony. And I, I think this was a valuable experience for, for all of us to, to hear. Firsthand accounts from prior panels, academic and professional accounts of what they think core, core craft is, should become, should not become. And we, we certainly have our work cut out for us as we take next steps. This is just the, the beginning of the public-facing portion of our effort. We've been doing a lot of the last several months' work behind the scenes leading up to, to this hearing. But we are intent on putting forward basically our findings, a response to the things that we heard here, and doing the best that we can to try and address core craft this legislative session. And so this was helpful, it informs us, and I'm sure many of us will continue to be in touch as we move forward. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.